I was calling to order, I think, the December 6, 2016 Placer County Board of Supervisors hearing, and we're going to start with a flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes. Thank you, Jim. Now, we will have our meeting procedures read by the clerk of the board.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, December 6, 2016. Agendas are available at the table on the side of the room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. However, please note that the board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. When you speak, clearly state your name for the record, and be aware there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Keep in mind the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. Please place all cell phones in silent mode. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Now is the time for consent. Consent calendar, these are a list of items intended to be approved all in one motion, but the board is happy to pull any that they would like to be heard or discussed individually. To kick it off, we are going to continue to a date uncertain, Item 4C. And I have been requested already to pull for discussion, Item 7E, excuse me, 10E. And if there are any others that someone would like us to pull for individual discussion, we'd be happy to do that. Anybody from the board, or anyone from the public? Okay, so with that, did you have something, Jerry?
I just want to make sure that consent agenda included the new Item 5.5 in the amendments to Item 5.
Of course. Thank you. So, we have a motion?
Yes.
And a second?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Stay.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wigan?
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved with the items to be pulled. So now, we will take up first, Item 10E.
Good afternoon, thank you, board. Rich Miller from Americans for Safe Access, as well as Placer County Garage Association and Therapeutic Alternative. I want to thank you for your hard work on working on this ordinance, 10E, Medical Cannabis Regulation. Although, all your hard work is appreciated, the patients still don't feel we have access because it does limit the access to those patients, since a lot of patients can't grow, and there is no distribution model. We are asking that you reconsider and move forward with incorporating the Cottage Industry Bill, which is AB 2516, to allow those cultivators that have been operating in the past to continue operating, to provide safe access to medical patients throughout Placer County. We understand that without the distribution model or dispensary avenue as well, that patients won't be granted access that are in limited rural areas, so I'm asking you to reconsider this as we move forward. We do appreciate all the staff and your hard work in this ordinance. We do understand that you are giving some patients rights, but it is not including all patients. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you in the future. I place my card with all of you. You are more than welcome to contact me or email me so we can sit down and have a dialogue on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address Item 10E, which are cannabis regulations, the second reading of our proposed ordinance? See none, I'll bring it back to the board for action or comments.
Move approval, 10E.
Is there a second?
One second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. So, now, we have public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public can address the board on something that is not on the agenda. Please come forward to state your name for the record.
My name is David Steppner. I'm from Alimic Valley, California. At your November 15 supervisor meeting, you considered the Village at Squaw Valley's specific plan and environmental impact report. Along with four of my fellow Squaw Valley residents, we presented a reduced density concept called the RSA, which we said met the developer's requirements for internal rate of return and competitive position, the community's requirement for reduced environmental impacts, and the county's requirement for substantial tax receipts and fees. Near the end of the meeting, prior to the vote being taken, the attorney for the developer was allowed to speak, and he gave a series of statements that he said demonstrated the RSA proposal was infeasible. Almost every one of those attorney's points was factually incorrect, but we were not given an opportunity to respond. So I will take three minutes and provide that response now. Claim one: With fewer units, there will be less money generated for amenities and therefore lower real estate prices. Fact: We had included all specific plan amenities and costs, including all retail operations and the full-size MAC. Claim two: Infrastructure is a fixed cost, so just because there are few units doesn't mean it lowers the cost. Fact: In the EPS document, the infrastructure costs for the draft EIR 50% reduced density alternative, which I'll call the RDA, were given as 70% of the proposed project. So a smaller project did result in less infrastructure costs, and with the RSA more compact than the RDA, the infrastructure costs would have even been lower. Claim three: The RSA needs structured parking to achieve the necessary number of spaces, which would cost an additional $27 million. Fact: The RSA had exactly the same number of parking spaces as the proposed project. No additional structured parking was needed. Claim four: A lower number of units would have reduced the MAC's revenue, which was not included. Fact: This was included. Claim five: The RSA would increase runoff from the Village Court Neighborhood Parking into the North Fork of Squaw Creek. Fact: The surface parking area had exactly the same footprint as the parking lot does today. There would be no increase in runoff. Claim six: The environmental creek restoration may not happen because less revenue will be generated by the RSA. Fact: In the specific plan 50% reduced density alternative, the Squaw Creek restoration is lessened, not lost. With the RSA that we proposed at 65%, more of the creek restoration would have gotten done, and the Friends of Squaw Creek would have taken up the slack. Claim seven: The RSA had no provision for snow storage. Fact: The same cutouts for snow storage as the specific plan were included. There were five more claims that had the same exact fact response, but you get the point. What you heard was totally false. It matters little now, except for you to know that, one, we had done our homework; two, the plan was viable; and, three, you missed an opportunity for compromise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good mor—excuse me. Good morning, Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. Thanks for coming to the lake today. I'm glad you had a safe drive and no weather issues. Today, I'm asking Placer County to reevaluate an increase to a meaningful factor in Lufi's for traffic mitigation. And as part of that, stop saying some portions of Highway 267 will be widened, as much of its destiny was changed with the Liberty Utilities Infrastructure Installation. I provided you photographs of that and proof that there are areas that will not ever be widened during the Marne Valley West presentations. Also, in-lufi's for affordable housing need to be more meaningful and increased. The DOMAS project built 77 units. Kings Beach now, for the people that don't know, the name is DOMAS, was approximately $32 million. I have provided you that financial spreadsheet from the developer. That equals $415,000 a unit. We are not asking our developers to provide their fair share, and I think we need to start doing that to get meaningful units on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the—please come forward to state your name for the record?
Park Beckdole, Tahoe City, California. I represent Hester Real Estate and the O'Garras and Burton Olleys on 2980 Northlake Boulevard, and been doing battle on the community plan for three, three-and-a-half years, and trying to get back into the mode of making a decision on this.
And I'm sorry, are you addressing the Tahoe Basin area plan?
No. I'm just addressing, trying to deal—we were left out of the plan.
Well, we're going to be discussing the plan. It's actually on the agendas—agenda, so the appropriate time to talk about that would be when we take up that item.
Can I leave this information here?
Sure. Clerk of the board? Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address something that is not on the agenda? See none? All closed public comment, and we'll take up any board member reports? See none? We will now go to our first, our department item, which is on the supplemental agenda, and it is a homeless grant agreement with Sutter Medical Foundation. Jeff?
Good morning, Chair Wigan, members of the board. Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. It's with great pleasure that I bring to you this morning a recommendation that your board approve a grant from the Sutter Medical Foundation in the amount of $1 million to purchase housing units and provide rental subsidies for homeless individuals in Placer County's Whole Person Care Pilot Program. Also recommending that you authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign subsequent amendments, consistent with the grant agreement's subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. And finally, concurrently authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to provide an initial investment of $1 million to Sutter Medical Foundation to leverage Sutter's charitable contribution. So, as a bit of background, in October, your board approved a grant for our county to participate in the Whole Person Care Pilot Program. We're one of 18 counties around the state of California. This is a program designed to focus services on individuals that are frequent utilizers of public services. And this would include public hospitals, emergency rooms, the jail, and also psychiatric health facilities. The populations that we intend to address with this are homeless individuals with serious mental illness and/or concurrent other chronic health conditions. This is a great program, really allows us to focus on a vulnerable population in Placer County. The only deficiency of this program was that it did not provide dollars for permanent housing for the individuals enrolled in the program. Sutter has graciously come forward and decided to invest in this initiative and provide dollars that we can go ahead and provide permanent housing options. With Sutter's contribution, we believe we can provide housing for 15 to 20 individuals every year. We commend Sutter for their investment in addressing the issue of homelessness. They're actually making similar contributions and investments in the region to other counties and cities. They've also initiated a campaign called Getting to Zero, which is really focused on the Sacramento region, attempting to reduce homelessness and eventually get us to the point of zero. And so, we're proud to be partnering with Sutter on this initiative, as we both work together to address homelessness within Placer County. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jeff. So Jennifer?
Yeah, I first want to start by thanking Sutter for being a great partner, but I also want to thank the county and your staff particularly for being nimble enough to move quickly to actually be able to say yes to this opportunity, because it did have some fairly constrained times around it. On the Whole Person Care, just one question on that. It is also intended, as I understand, to keep that high-capacity user out of homelessness. So it is not intended only to address those who are currently in homelessness, but to also prevent others from falling into homelessness.
Absolutely. There's a prevention component. It's—over the five-year period, we estimate we will serve about 450 individuals.
Great. I really just wanted to clarify that, because I've heard a number of folks say, "Oh, it's only designed for the homeless." And it's really not. It's designed to help address the situation around homelessness, but a huge portion of that is keeping people out of homelessness. So, again, my thanks to you, my thanks to Sutter, and if there's no other comments on this, I would make a motion that we approve.
Okay, my motion, but then Jack has a slide up.
Yeah, thank you. Real briefly, Jeff, could you kind of explain the process of the rollout, what the methodology is going to be to—or what percentage of this money is going to go to the folks that Jen just described, as opposed to folks that are already homeless? Can you kind of talk, speak to that?
Yeah, certainly. What we will do is, we will attempt to purchase housing. We're looking at perhaps three different buildings. We will go through a very similar process to what we've done in terms of our agreement to purchase housing in Roseville, that we're actually in escrow for. So very likely, would be issuing an RFP, identifying a nonprofit housing organization that would essentially manage the housing over a 35- to 45-year period. And this housing will be reserved for individuals that are participants of the program. So they're going to have to be identified, they're going to have to agree to intensive case coordination services. And as we work through the program, we will work as quickly as we can to place them in permanent housing.
Okay. Thank you.
So, again, congratulations, Jeff. My conversations with Sutter, they're very excited about opportunities here in Placer County and your program, and attitude that you're taking forth on this issue. So I look forward to some great things in working with others on this issue as it emerges.
Great, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, we will take up our first timed item, which is 905 Community Development Resources, and it is the division of a 40-acre ag preserve and Williamson Act contract.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Callie Kedinger Cecil, and I'm with the Placer County Planning Services Division. The item before you is a request to adopt a resolution to divide an existing 40-acre agricultural preserve and Williamson Act contract to establish two agricultural preserves and Williamson Act contracts totaling 20 acres each. The properties are located in the Blue Oaks Ranch subdivision in Auburn, and in 2007, your board approved establishment of an agricultural preserve and Williamson Act contract. That number is PAGP 2006-0742. That was on lots 34 and 35 of the Blue Oaks Ranch subdivision. The property owners request that the contract be split in order to allow Lot 34 to be developed with a new single-family residence. Current agricultural operations include livestock grazing and vineyard production and sales. Lot 35 has six acres of irrigated pasture and two acres of producing vineyard. Lot 34 consists of 18.9 acres of dry land range. The Harnacles are developing five to six acres of irrigated pasture on this parcel. Staff presented to the Agricultural Commission on September 12. The Agricultural Commission voted unanimously to recommend to your board to approve the creation of the agricultural preserve. Four letters from property owners in the Blue Oaks Ranch subdivision were submitted for this item. One letter was in support of the contract split, and the three additional letters raised concerns related to the Blue Oaks Ranch subdivision CCNRs, and the Blue Oaks Ranch conservation easement that encompasses all of the properties in the subdivision and limits the area that can be developed. These letters were concerned that the property owners are requesting to split their properties and objected to any alteration or modification to the subdivision CCNRs. The Harnacles own both lots, and there's no request before the board to subdivide these parcels. We are requesting to split the current Williamson Act contract into two parcels, one for each legal parcel. So as you can see, on the left, we have the existing preserve area, and on the right, that's the proposed preserve area. So it's splitting one existing contract. In accordance with the commission's recommendations, staff requests that the board adopt a resolution creating agricultural preserve PLN 15-00341, and authorize the chair to execute the contract you have in your packet based on the following findings in brief. Find that the creation of agricultural preserve PLN 15-00341 is categorically exempt from environmental review. Find that the agricultural preserve PLN 15-00341 is consistent with the goals and policies of the Placer County General Plan, because this action will result in conservation of valuable agricultural land and will improve the viability of Placer County's agricultural economy. Find that the agricultural preserve PLN 15-00341 is consistent with the requirements of the California Land Conservation Act and the Placer County Williamson Act ordinance. Adopt the resolution to establish agricultural preserve PLN 15-00341, which you'll find in your packet as Attachment 5. And finally, approve and authorize the chair to execute land conservation agreement for PLN 15-00341, which is found in Attachment 4. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions from board members? Any questions from anybody in the audience? See none? I will bring it back to the board for action. Oh, excuse me. This is a public hearing. I can't even get through the ear. Public hearing, so I'm formally opening up the public hearing for anyone from the public who'd like to address the board on the issue. See no, and I will formally close the public hearing, and again, bring it back to the board for consideration. And I think we had a motion from Jim?
Yeah.
Second from Jennifer?
Yeah, second from Jack.
Jack. All those in favor say aye.
And the motion includes the findings on page three.
No, I'm going to argue with this time, Jerry. No, just kidding, that was a joke. Always wanted to do that. Must be the last meeting I'm going to chair this year. Yes, obviously, the motion does include the findings, as per the maker of the—yes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Callie.
So we will now take up our 910 timed item, which is Community Development Resources, and it's the Placer—excuse me—Tahoe Basin Area Plan.
Good morning, Chairman. EJ Valdi with Planning Services Division. We're going to take just a minute to get set up, and then Crystal will be up to present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, Crystal.
I'm Crystal Jacobson with Placer County Planning Services Division, and happy to be here today after several years with this effort. We are pleased to be here to present to your board the Tahoe Basin Area Plan for consideration. We are also here today to present the Tahoe City Lodge project, which is intended to implement the area plan. So before I begin, I just want to thank, first, all of our area plan teams, which were our citizen advisory groups that helped to inform and shape the plan, as well as our stakeholders in the basin that also helped to shape the plan. And then finally, our partners, including TRPA, who are here today, and also Placer staff. This was really a product—this plan is a product of strong collaboration, and I just am very happy to be here today to present this to your board for consideration. So on that note, we do have a few folks in the room that are available to answer questions. I'm going to give the entire presentation, turn it over to the project applicant to present on his slides. But we do have Steve Buelna, who was the project planner for the Tahoe City Lodge project here. We have our environmental consultants, Adam Lewandowski and Annette Hansel with Ascent here. And then Sumir Tuma is the project applicant for the Tahoe City Lodge project, and he has his team available as well. And then finally, our TRPA partners, Lucia Maloney and Tiffany Good are here today to answer any questions that come up related to TRPA. I do want to point out that this is a presentation on both the area plan and the Tahoe City Lodge. The EIR did and EIS now analyzed both projects, the area plan at a program level and the Tahoe City Lodge at a project level, which was funded by the applicant. The Tahoe City Lodge, then, is a separate project request, independent from the area plan. They are proposing to utilize the development standards contained within the area plan. We feel that by analyzing them together, we really gain a better understanding of how a project in the basin can implement the area plan. So after I give the presentation, we would ask that your board accept public comment on both, but then at the end, that your board would deliberate and take action separately on both projects. So with that, this is a map of the area plan boundary. It encompasses all land within the Tahoe Basin portion of Placer County. So the area plan is an update to all of the community plans and general plans in the Tahoe Basin. It would be replacing and superseding those documents and all—basically, all regulatory provisions in the basin. So it's a—we're consolidating all those plans into one plan. So just by way of background, in 2012, TRPA updated their regional plan, and so shortly after that, we embarked upon this process to update our plans as a way to implement that regional plan. And so we first created four area plan teams, the citizen advisory groups that I spoke to earlier. They really helped to inform the plan. We also created town center vision plans for the town centers of Tahoe City and Kings Beach. Town centers are designated by TRPA through the regional plan. Those are the areas where TRPA would like to see concentrated redevelopment efforts. In 2014, we did release a notice of preparation for an environmental document and released a draft plan at that time. That plan was met with concern related to the sort of scale of land use changes proposed in that plan. Specifically, the TRPA board noted that they would like us to concentrate land use changes within the town centers. And so what we did then is kind of regrouped and took some time to retool the plan, which now is better aligned with the regional plan and really focuses on environmentally beneficial redevelopment in the town centers. And so in July 2015, we did release a second notice of preparation to begin the environmental work, along with the revised or retooled plan, and then released a draft plan in July—excuse me, June of this year. And that was—the plan was released along with the environmental document. And then finally, on November 4, we did release the final environmental document and final plan that's before you today. So in terms of organization, the document before you today is an area plan policy document. And then a second document, which we call the Implementing Regulations. That's really kind of the zoning ordinance or tool to implement the policy document. The area plan contains a number of programs. The key objective, again, is to implement the direction of the regional plan, and the area plan does that first by carrying forward regional plan redevelopment incentives available within the town centers. So again, the town centers is where the regional plan would like the concentrated development to occur as a way to get development off of the sensitive lands in the basin. And so the incentives include increased height, density, and land coverage. So the idea is that you incentivize redevelopment in the town centers, you intensify your land use, your built environment there, and get the development off of the sensitive lands. The area plan also is intended to implement the regional plan through what we call area-wide amendments, substitute standards, and mixed-use districts. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about each of those items. So the area-wide amendments are really encouraged or required by the regional plan and reflective very much of the area plan team input that we received. The first is to allow residential uses in the commercial—the existing commercial nodes, which are now being rezoned to be labeled as mixed use. We also updated our parking ordinances, so we prepared a parking study as part of this plan. It helped to inform the parking regulations, so we made some changes there to really relax standards, really to address some constraints that we have in our town centers with respect to the small parcel size. We also have mixed-use site and building design standards. These are intended, again, to just maintain the community character that we have up here in our communities in Tahoe. And then we've added a dark-skY lighting provision. The next is what we call the substitute standards. This is really the substantive changes that are outlined in the plan. These are changes—would-be changes to the TRPA regional plan, so these are not allowed through the TRPA regional plan today. The first is a program for a limited conversion of CFA, Commercial Floor Area, to TAU, Tourist Accommodation Units. This would be a pilot program for onsite conversions of the county CFA that we maintain. The area plan would expand upon the TRPA land use conversion programs with a limited pilot program, and it's only for onsite conversions. The conversion rate would be 1 TAU to 450 square feet of CFA. This is consistent with TRPA's conversion rate that was developed for their bonus unit pool. The—this program would be capped at no more than 200 TAUs. This was initially 400 is where the—it was where the limit was. We did reduce that in response to comments that we had received on this program. And then there are some additional requirements. The sites must have BMP certificates, must have sidewalk access, a quarter mile—must be a quarter mile from a transit stop, and again, they can only be used in the town centers. The next provision that we are requesting is a—what we're calling a non-contiguous project site in town centers, and this is really to address land assembly challenges. So it would allow you to come in, and your project site could be basically two parcels on either end of town, for example. And so it really just provides some more flexibility in terms of actually, you know, realizing redevelopment in the town centers. That is not allowed under today's code, so that's a change. We're also proposing a revised level of service standard for traffic congestion in the town centers. There's a policy in the area plan that is accepting a level of F in the town centers of Tahoe City and Kings Beach. And the reason for this really is that the area plan is intended to really focus more on reducing vehicle miles traveled and to get away from the level of service standard. And then for, the last one is a provision that would, is related to secondary dwelling units. So this would allow them on parcels less than an acre in the basin. Currently, today, they are only allowed on parcels with an acre or more. This is to address housing affordability. We have recently changed this provision in response to, in response to comments that we received on the draft environmental document. It was initially proposed to only be allowed on parcels that were a quarter mile away from a transit or a mixed-use district, and we have actually eliminated that provision and also required a deed restriction for affordability. So there was a lot of concern about housing affordability and about how second units can really be a way to get affordable units in the basin. So we have added a deed restriction for affordability. There's also a requirement that the units be restricted for residential use, so you may not use them as a tourist accommodation unit. So in terms of the land use plan or the overall mapping, the areas outside of the town centers have been, they really remain unchanged. So what we're doing is we're carrying forward the existing plan area statements, the provisions, regulatory provisions that are included in the existing plan area statements have been really carried forward. However, what we're doing is really changing them to be labeled as sub-districts. So the plan area statements that used to be, have a number related to it, those are dropped, have been dropped. We've put them into kind of a table in the plan, just for ease of use, but really, the regulatory provisions outside of the town centers are being carried forward. Within the town centers, we also have sub-districts, mixed-use sub-districts. We have what we call town center core and transition areas. The core areas are the areas where we'd like, we allow up to four stories within literally the core of the town centers, where we'd like to see the more concentrated development. The transition areas are those gateways, and the height limit there is three stories. We're also proposing a Kings Beach Town Center, what we're calling a land use classification cleanup. This is really, we had some mapped parcel boundaries that didn't follow the town center boundaries, so this is just really a simple cleanup exercise based on survey data. And then for the recreation and conservation lands that have been acquired over the years for conservation purposes, we're proposing to put those lands into an either Recreation or Conservation Zone District. And then finally, we have what we call special plan areas. These are really overlay districts where lands that wanted to develop on, within those special planning areas, would have to come in with either some future planning, and in some instances would have to meet additional environmental improvements in order to develop and utilize the existing, or the town center redevelopment incentives that are part of the regional plan. So I'm gonna actually kind of talk a little bit more about that here. In Kings Beach, we've got a couple. We have one at the intersection of State Route 28 and 267, so this is really that gateway area. And so what we'd like to see here is connected sidewalks, SEZ restoration, and scenic enhancements if a project were to come in. The second is North State Line. And so what we're doing here is carrying forward the existing regulatory provisions in the North State Line area, but if a project were to come in and want to utilize the town center incentives that are part of the regional plan, they would have to prepare a town center plan to do that. And then in Tahoe City, we actually have one special planning area that's off of this map. It's down towards Alpine, along State Route 89. There are some sites there that we're proposing future zoning changes and standards to be considered, so there's a special planning area over those. These are some industrial sites that are actually non-conforming along the river there. In the Tahoe City River District, we have a special planning overlay district, so that's kind of this area here. This is really, the reason for this was to focus on supporting the goals of the State Route 89 Fanny Bridge Revitalization Project, so it encourages active recreation and access by bicycling, walking, and transit. We also have a Tahoe City Western Gateway, that would be kind of this area in here. The idea there is that we would get riverfront restoration, public access, and bicycle and pedestrian improvements there if folks wanted to redevelop that site. And then finally, the last one is the Tahoe City Golf Course, and this one is a little bit more complex. I'm gonna talk a little more specifically about that, because it includes a modification to the TRPA town center boundary, but it's also a special planning area. So what you see here is, the areas in red is the TRPA-designated town center boundary. This is what's existing today under the TRPA regional plan. This is the golf course property right here. And so what we're proposing is to modify that boundary so that the golf course, most of the golf course property would go into recreation, but there's a piece of it up by the clubhouse that would come into the town center and be designated as mixed use. And so, so the adjustments, there would be 7.2 acres being removed from the town center and 4.2 acres being added. That's the clubhouse area. It's a net reduction of approximately three acres. Going back to that map, though, I just want to point out, the area's coming out is this right here, which is owned by the Tahoe City PUD. It's the Fairway Community Center, so we worked with them on this proposal. And then this little area right in here is actually the county-owned, it's a wetland detention basin. So those are really sites that we don't anticipate redevelopment, so we propose to pull those sites out and instead pull this clubhouse piece in. So in order to redevelop on this site right here, again, it's a special planning area, so the site would need to meet additional environmental improvements, including a one-to-one restoration and sidewalk access. And so the Tahoe City Lodge actually has partnered with the TCPUD to do just that, to redevelop the clubhouse, and I'll speak to that a little bit more lately, but that's an example of a project that's coming in to utilize the incentives there on that clubhouse piece. And I just want to point out, other, there would be opportunity for other projects in the future as well to utilize those incentives. So next, I just want to talk about some opportunity sites that were identified in the area plan and also analyzed in the environmental document. The first is the Kings Beach Center Design Concept. This is the former BBLLC site, and this is, it was formerly owned by the Redevelopment Agency, now owned by the county. And so what we did here is looked at a concept, a mixed-use concept on this site, because it's a pretty big site. And so we looked at the potential for a lodge, as well as some civic use and retail, so really a mixed-use site right here in the heart of Kings Beach. And so we analyzed that at a program level in the EIR. And then the Tahoe City Lodge project, again, was the current project, making its way through the process, and it was proposing to utilize the development standards outlined in the area plan. And so that has been, again, analyzed in the environmental document at a project level, funded by the applicant. So there's been a series of refinements to the area plan over the year. I'm not gonna get into all of these, but just want to point out, we have been making refinements regularly throughout the year in response to stakeholder input. More recently is the November 4th area plan that was released, contains all of the refinements that have been made over the year. But I want to touch on the refinements that have been made in response to comments that we received on the draft environmental document. So we have added some new policies related to emergency preparedness and evacuation. We have incorporated the Placer Operational Area East Side Emergency Evacuation Plan, so that's incorporated by reference. There's a policy to that, that speaks to that in the area plan. We've also added a policy that requires emergency preparedness and evacuation plans for all new development coming forward. We have modified text exhibits related to a missing link. It's a trail segment of the Lakeside Trail in Tahoe City between Commons Beach and the Y. We had initially shown an alignment along the lakeside, and that was met with some concern, and so we made some changes to the exhibits and also some changes to the text so that we weren't specifically speaking to one specific alignment. We've also, again, as I noted earlier, modified the CFA to TAU conversion program to reduce that cap from 400 to 200. We've added new policies related to transit, parking management strategies, and adaptive traffic management. That adaptive traffic management is really key to working with our partners, including Caltrans and TRPA, on traffic strategies, or strategies to address traffic on Highway 89 and Highway 267. We've added a new policy related to wayfinding signage. This is, the intent here is really so that visitors can get around town. We have modified, again, the secondary unit program, which I spoke to earlier, but I just will point out, there was very, very broad support in, for this added provision of the deed restriction for affordability. Some additional refinements, we modified the North Tahoe East Mixed Use Zoning Map to include public beachlands and the recreational districts, so there were some lands along the beach that were publicly owned that we pulled in to the recreational zone district. We added some language regarding the prioritization of SEZ restoration projects. We had heard from comments that there wasn't enough emphasis on public lands being restored, and so what we did is we prioritized Griff Creek, Pomeen Park, and Burton Creek as areas that we'd like to see SEZ restoration occur. We have modified some uses in the town centers in response to some comments of concern related to laundry and dry cleaning facilities and recreational uses. They're not necessarily limited altogether, but we modified those use requirements. We've also added some policies related to the public trust, eradication of non-native terrestrial plants, and protection of the Tahoe Yellow Crest, so just some vegetation policies that folks had suggested. And then finally, more recently, since the November 4th plan was released, we have made some additional refinements based on input. So there are two mitigation measures, mitigation 10-1H and 10-1G that have been, they were, they had already been mitigation in the environmental document, but we simply folded them into the area plan as policy. The first is about TRP, it's implementing TRP's congestion management process. And then the second is requiring a four-year review of vehicle trips in the basin and really looking at mobility strategies. So you'll see both of those in as policy. We've also modified mitigation 10-1C that would, this is really related to the Tahoe City Lodge project. It clarifies that traffic impacts fees paid by that project would be dedicated to Tahoe capital improvements. And then we modified the secondary residential unit program. This came about very recently, and it's adding in a provision that would require a four-year review of the secondary residential unit programs that we can make some needed adjustments. So if that deed restriction for affordability is not working, we can make some adjustments if we need to in four years. And then those new policies and necessary corrections are included as erratas before your board today. I also want to point out that we had a recent comment last week regarding mitigation 12-1, and so you'll see an errata dated December 6th before your board's consideration that really clarifies that mitigation measure as well. And then real quick, just some other topics that were addressed in your staff report. One had to do with community character and scale. So you may hear from some area plan team folks about concern related to the height allowances in Kings Beach. The area plan team had provided input that they wanted three stories on the lakeside. The area plan actually allows for four stories within the core, three stories in the, what we call transition areas or those gateways. But we do have policies to protect the lake views, and we have a new standard that would require, if you want to go to four stories, you have to open up view corridors by 35% on your lot. So the idea is that you, we get these little, you know, view sheds of the lake in between towns so that you're not driving through town and it's, you know, a wall of buildings. We also have site and building standards to ensure community character. We've standards where if you're going up, you have to step back, so the idea is that we have some architectural elements that help to deal with building massing. In addition, the Kings Beach Mixed Use Zoning and Shared Use Path, there were some comments provided, I know, to your board about some folks here, residential uses in the heart of Kings Beach that actually wanted to be downzoned. They wanted to make sure that they could use their properties for residential uses in the future. And so this area was included, I just, it's really important to note that this is included in the TRPA-designated town center and zoned mixed use. The area plan is intending to implement that. We're carrying forward a mixed-use designation on those lands. It is just that, mixed use, it would allow for residential uses along with commercial. I'll also point out that those areas, they're really residential uses right on the lakeside here. They've been zoned commercial since 1959, and so we're just, again, implementing the regional plan. And then finally, what you heard a little bit today in public comment, I just want to point out this non-conforming uses outside of town centers. You may hear from some folks about this desire to upzone some lands that are legal non-conforming uses, and I'll just point out that in 2014, we looked at all of the non-conforming uses in the basin and tried to reconcile those through zoning changes, and again, that was met with concerns, so we really scaled back and aren't addressing those changes in use and changes in zoning at this time. We can commit to doing that in the future with a separate sort of independent, you know, work program. So with that, I'm gonna move on to the Tahoe City Lodge project. Again, this was included as a project-level review in the environmental document. It seeks to redevelop an existing commercial property to construct 118-unit hotel project, clubhouse, and shared parking with the Tahoe City Lodge, or excuse me, Tahoe City Golf Course property. So it is really a, kind of a public-private partnership, if you will. Here's an aerial of the site, so it's, the Tahoe City Lodge is the former Hendrickson site here in town, or in Tahoe City, and then here's the golf course. The clubhouse is right up in here. And the, I just want to point out that the golf course is now owned and managed by the TCPUD. It was purchased in 2012 under an MOU with TCPUD, Placer County, the Turkey Tahoe Airport District, and the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, but it is owned by the Tahoe City Public Utility District. Here's another aerial. The Hendrickson property actually, right, sorry, go back, right here, was purchased in June of 2014 by Keela Tahoe, the project applicant. And the Hendrickson property contains three commercial buildings right now. The existing uses include restaurants, furniture stores, all kinds of different commercial uses. I will point out that the Bechtel Building is right here, and you've received, I think, a lot of comment about that building. I'll speak to that a little bit more here in a minute. Here's some, or some photos of the existing conditions onsite. It was originally constructed between 1960 and '62, so this is kind of right before the Olympics. And over the years, the property is really, has not been upgraded at all, so it's definitely in kind of a blighted condition, in need of restoration. Here's the zoning map of the site, so this is, this is actually the zoning outlined in the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, so that, this entire purple area here is mixed-use town center, so this darker purple area, outlined in red, is the project site. So it's within a mixed-use town center district, which allows for hotel operations. The entitlement is being requested today as a vesting tentative map to create a condo hotel, a conditional use permit, a variance to the parking standards, and an exception to the implementing, the area plan implementing ordinance for compact parking stalls, and I'm gonna touch on those a little bit more detailed here in a minute. So here's the site plan. It's a three-acre project site, so again, this entire site right here is three acres. 1.7 acres is included on the golf course. I think I lost my, I lost my laser pointer, sorry. 1.7 acres is on the golf course, and 1.4 acres is the former Hendrickson property. There would be three separate buildings for a total of 118 hotel units. It is proposed applying to the, to the height allowance of 56 feet in the town centers. The front of the building would contain the hotel operations, the restaurant, and the 40 units that would be maintained by the lodge. And then there's 78 units to the rear that would be, the condo hotel still functioning as a hotel, but they would be, thank you, they'd be owner occupied. Let's see if I can, so this is, this is the area, the 78 units, and then the 40 would be up in here. And so these units back in here, that, of the condo hotel piece, I'm still having trouble. I don't know what is going on. There it is, right here. Those would be used by the owners for a maximum of 90 days during a calendar year and no more than 30 days in a calendar quarter. The remainder of the time, those would be placed into a rental pool. And then related to the golf course component, they are proposing demolition and relocation of the existing clubhouse. So right now, it's, the clubhouse is right about there, and it would be reconstructed over here. They would be adding a second story. They would be adding a second story, which would include conference room facilities. And again, that would be a shared use type of facility. And then the parking that you see here, the proposed parking is also shared, and there was a parking analysis done to that, and I'm going to speak to that a little bit more. But it does include some operational safeguards that will be outlined in a management plan that will be submitted with the project. So here is a rendering of the proposed project. This is a view from actually highway, so State Route 28 would be right here. And so I think it's important to note that this is four-story, proposed at four stories. But the area plan requires you to have architectural elements to kind of break up the building massing. And so what we see here is, from the street, it really looks like it's three stories, which was the intent of the visioning that was done for Tahoe City and Kings Beach and the town centers. So you really try to break up the massing of the building. So we have 3,900 square feet of restaurant lobby and other hotel operations on the ground floor, and then two stories of hotel operations above. And then the rooftop terrace would be on the, on the top floor. I will point out that this went before the Tahoe Basin Design Site Review Committee on October 25th, and it was met with a very favorable response, so in support. That was informational, it still needs to go back as an action, but in general, they were supportive of this concept. Here's the issues that were, I kind of worked through by staff during the project review. The consistency with the area plan, it definitely is meeting the intent of the area plan. Noise and density were also some issues that I'll speak to more here in a minute, as well as parking easements and the variance that I talked about earlier. Workforce housing was also addressed. The, the project is complying with Policy C2 of our housing element, and so you'll see that outlined in your staff report as well. So with respect to the variance to parking, in response to comments received on the draft, there were a lot of comments about, some concern about parking that was right here in this easement here. So this is otherwise referred to, you can hear it referred to as the Bechtel easement. So again, the Bechtel Building is here. This easement right here provides for access to, actually, access to the, back into here, but then all the way up into the golf course. And initially, there had been some parking proposed there, and so that was met with some concern about whether or not we should have parking in that easement. And so the parking plan has been revised to exclude those parking stalls from that easement and re-distribute, put them into this area right back, right back in here. And so when they, when they did that and redesigned the parking lot, they had to remove some landscape strips. So what they're requesting is a variance to a design standard that would require landscape strips every 10 stalls. And so staff feels that there's special circumstances to support that. It's a constrained site, again, like all sites in the town centers. In addition to that, you know, the, the parking is to the rear of the property, so you're not seeing a sea of parking up front. And again, it abuts, you know, a very landscaped area of the golf course. There's also a provision, I didn't mention this, there's, there is a request for an exception to the area plan provisions, and this has to do with compact parking stalls. So the applicant is requesting more compact parking stalls than what would otherwise be required. Again, that's just to ensure that we've got, to address the comments received during the draft environmental document. So this, this slide addresses density. So some questions had come up about how density was calculated for this project. And so it's important to note that density was calculated only using the areas in yellow. So that's what this slide is demonstrating. And then the areas in blue are actually, this is, again, the easement area, the Bechtel, and then this area in here is SEZ. So it excludes the areas in green up by the clubhouse, and these blue areas were not used to calculate density for this project. And then also on this slide is, I had mentioned earlier about how the project would have to do a one-to-one restoration. And so they're proposing to restore parts of the golf course. So these hatched areas that you see up here is the proposal for SEZ restoration on the golf course. Okay, so finally, I'm going to move on to the environmental analysis and talk about, kind of summarize that. So the NOP was released, again, on June 3rd, ran for 60 days. That was in 2015. We did work closely with TRPA and the consultants to prepare the draft, and then the draft was released for a 60-day public review on June 15th of this year. We did hold five meetings during that public review period, including both daytime and nighttime meetings in Kings Beach and down in South Shore to accept comments. We received 111 separate comment letters totaling approximately 450 separate individual comments that needed to be responded to. So a lot, a lot more comments than we anticipated, but we've been working hard over the last few months to do, to respond to those comments. It has resulted in a number of changes to the EIR/ES, including additional and expanded mitigation. So we really did carefully consider those comments and tried to make changes where we could. So in terms of the alternatives evaluated, there were four. One was the proposed area plan and lodge. The second was the area plan with no substitute standards, those standards that I had talked about, the kind of the bulk of the change. We had, that this alternative two did not include those changes. It also included a reduced-scale lodge. Alternative three was what we called a reduced-intensity area plan, a reduced-type lodge. And then finally, alternative four was a no, no area plan, no project. So the alternatives were developed to try to reduce the potential of environmental effects, and then they were also really in response to the comments that we received on the NOP. And so I think it's important to point out that the area plan has been identified and determined to be the environmentally superior alternative. So moving forward with the area plan, you actually get environmental benefits. With respect to the lodge, there wasn't any specific alternative that rose to the top in terms of being the environmentally superior, but definitely the three action alternatives were more superior, environmentally superior than doing nothing at the lodge site. So in terms of a summary of the environmental effects, the EIR/ES found that the area plan and lodge would have no impact or less than significant impacts related to land use, biological resources, public services, and recreation. It also found that the area plan and lodge could result in potentially significant impacts to these areas listed here, but they would be, they could be mitigated to less than significant levels. And then it found, again, a number of beneficial impacts, including, or excuse me, beneficial effects, including VMT, so it actually reduces VMT, I'll speak to that more here in a minute, water quality and scenic resources. So again, with the area plan, we get environmental, environmentally beneficial effects. There are a couple of significant and unavoidable impacts that were identified related to transportation and localized congestion. So under all area plan alternatives and several of the Tahoe City Lodge alternatives, it identified they would contribute to unacceptable levels of level of service between Grove Street and the Tahoe City Y and at the Grove Street intersection. So again, the EIR does include some mitigation to address that. The area plan also includes provisions to address that and policies. However, we have expanded the policies, as I mentioned earlier. We've also added several mitigation in response to this. It's important to know that these impacts are still considered significant and unavoidable after mitigation. So, and then with regard to greenhouse gas emissions, the area plan alternatives would result in future greenhouse gas emissions from construction and operation. These would be less than what's existing and less than what was analyzed in the regional plan environmental document, but that decrease would not be substantial enough to meet the new California targets. We do have mitigation that requires implementation of all feasible measures recommended by the Placer County Air Pollution Control District for new projects and retrofits. And in addition, what I provided to you, to your board today for consideration is the errata that would actually kind of clarify what that mitigation is. But even with this, the area plan would result, even though it does result in a reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, it is still considered significant and unavoidable because we can't meet those, those targets. And I think it's really important to note that the significant unavoidable impacts would occur, it was found that they would occur under every alternative, so including the no-action one. So in other words, these impacts would still occur if the area plan was not adopted. So really quick there, I want to touch on some key issues that came up in the comments on the draft environmental document and talk about how those were addressed. We had a number of topical areas with numerous comments. We did provide master responses to those. For the Tahoe City Lodge, the primary environmental concerns were related to noise and parking. With respect to the noise, the concern was about rooftop noise and the impacts to nearby residents and property owners. So mitigation measure 13-5 has been expanded to address that. And then related to parking, there were some concerns about the adequacy of the number of parking stalls, the distance of parking in terms of the shared use, use piece of the parking, and then also the parking and the easement. So I already talked specifically about the easement. We pulled out those stalls within the Bechtel easement to address the comments. But then also, to speak to the number of stalls and this concern about whether or not, there was concern about the shared parking and whether or not there was enough parking to meet the demand. There was a parking demand analysis conducted in the EIR. This graph actually shows the analysis, or the results of the analysis. And so what it shows is that many customers that are, that come to the lodge are expected to park once, but that there would be a decrease in the parking demand during the day, and that would be the same time the golf course would experience their peak demand. So really, the idea here is, and what was demonstrated in the analysis, is that the shared uses really complement each other from a parking demand perspective. We also received comments on SEZ restoration, which I noted earlier. So we have, again, prioritized public lands that we'd like to see SEZ restoration occur on. We also just clarified that the area plan is intended to implement the regional plan strategies. It still includes environmentally EIP projects here in the basin. And so really just added, just really kind of clarified with regard to those comments. For affordable housing, I touched on this already, but we have made modifications to the program to address comments received on affordable housing. We've also clarified questions about the in-lu fees and what, how those monies are treated when they come into the county and where they're directed in terms of meeting affordable housing needs. And then also talked, clarified about how we address short-term rentals in the county. Emergency evacuation was another area, topic of concern that we addressed in the final environmental document, and I talked a little bit about this earlier. We have included those two policies in the area plan. So the first thing we did is really clarify the role of the existing and project-specific evacuation plans. And again, that's really kind of pointing out the Placer County East Side Operations evacuation plan and, and making sure that we reference that in the, in the area plan. And then what we also did is did an evacuation analysis. So we first looked at the development potential in the basin, and it's important to note that growth is limited by the TRPA growth control system. And so the area plan is not changing any development potential in the basin. It simply sort of affects the location and design of where that growth is going to occur. So then, so what we did is we, we used that assumption and based, based our analysis on that. So the key considerations included, a standard traffic controls would be overridden by public safety officers during these emergency times. So they would be manually directing traffic. Traffic entering the evacuation area would be restricted to maximize roadway capacity for evacuating that traffic. So really, a delay during a normal busy day does not translate to the same kind of delay that you're going to see during an emergency situation. And so what we did is in the final, we conducted an analysis of traffic volumes under a potential evacuation scenario based on those assumptions. And what it found is that compared to the existing baseline conditions between the alternatives, the, really, the impacts are less than significant. So really, there's no discernible difference between evacuation conditions with or without the area plan is what this analysis found. So next, transportation and traffic were really topics that received a lot of the comments, probably more interest than any other topic on our draft document. And so when discussing, discussing traffic in the environmental document, we really focus on two things. One is the VMT, as I noted earlier. This is the total miles traveled by vehicles during a peak summer day. And the other is level of service. So that's really a delay, individual intersections or roadway segments. And so this table shows that VMT, it shows VMT and level of service today at build-out 2035, and then with and without the area plan. It also shows cumulative or build-out of the area plan plus max build-out of the surrounding areas. I'll point out, we did a real, a very conservative, we took a conservative approach, and we looked at our cumulative analysis, taking into consideration build-out of the Martis Valley Plan, Squaw, Alpine. We also looked at all of the large projects that were pending or making their way through the development process.
Mr. Chair, if I could. Crystal, just to, just to clarify, Crystal, when you say you took a conservative approach, you mean you picked a higher number rather than a lower number?
Right, correct.
Thank you.
Worst case.
Yes, yes.
If I could, just curious, if I recall correctly, when we looked at the Kings Beach Downtown Improvement Program, when we looked at Martis' build-out, it, I think, it did not include the decrease in the holding capacity as a result of open space acquisition and projects that had been approved that came in at lower densities. Do you know, is our approach here so conservative that it included the original Martis Valley Community Plan without any of those modifications, or do you know?
I don't know if they made those modifications or not. It did. Environmental consultants are saying yes. They're, did you want to speak to that, Gordon?
Gordon Shaw, LSC Transportation Consultants. I'll put on my hat of running the Truckee-Martis model for the town of Truckee. And over the years, as we have seen the Martis projects come in at lower than the Martis Valley Community Plan numbers, those, they, they have been reflected in that model. When we came to this analysis, we identified, you know, the current maximum from that model and the fact that we needed to add more traffic coming over the ridge because there's more traffic in that model at the top of the ridge than, than TRPA sees on this side. So we have added to the TRPA numbers, but it does reflect things like Martis Camp has come in at less than capacity, the original capacity.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Gordon. So what you're going to see is that with the area plan, it would decrease VMT below existing levels and then well below VMT at build-out with the area plan. And really, that's because the area plan is intended to reduce sprawl, focuses growth in the town centers of Tahoe City and Kings Beach. And then also, it really promotes transit, non-motorized transportation. So the idea here is we've, we're implementing mobility strategies to try to offset VMT. And so the analysis shows that the numbers actually are lower for VMT. So again, we've got beneficial impacts when it relates to vehicle miles traveled in, in the basin. And then with, we'll just point out that under the cumulative build-out, VMT does show that it would increase above existing levels under any scenario here. This increase would be less without the area plan as well. And then related to level of service that you see here below, today, one intersection, it's the intersection of Grove and State Route 28 exceeds level of service. With build-out, this would, with or without the area plan, that intersection would continue to exceed. And then with respect to the road segments, Highway 28, State Route 28 from Grove to the Tahoe City Y exceeds it, level of service in one direction today. And under build-out, with or without the area plan, it would exceed level of service in both. So the level of service exceedances that we identified in the environmental document are a significant impact. We have included mitigation to address those impacts. And then again, we've also expanded and added some new mitigation to address this. And I'm going to touch on those really quick. So we, many of the comments provided specific suggestions for ways to reduce traffic, and so we really looked at those seriously to add in some additional mitigation. So we've added, incorporated two different mitigation measures noted here on this slide, 10-1A and 10-1B. These, excuse me, we didn't add these in, we expanded on these. So one is the construction of a pedestrian crossing. It's like a hybrid beacon at the intersection of State Route 28 and Grove Street. And so what we did here is to require that that, that improvement be constructed within three years, so that, that has been changed. And then also, the mitigation measure 10-1- And then also, the mitigation measure 10-1-B is to establish a county service area zone of benefit to fund expansion of transit capacity. So what we've done here is it requires new development to pay an annual fee that provides ongoing transit funding. The draft had required that those fees be high enough to fund 16 additional hours per day in the winter peak period. And then the final, what we did is expanded that mitigation so that it would be required to fund 16 hours of winter and summer peak. And then we have, these are two new mitigation measures, again, that have been added in response to comments on the draft, so you'll see them in the final. The first is to expand requirements for transportation demand management plans. So these would require businesses to implement strategies to reduce vehicle use, things like providing shuttle buses, paid parking to encourage transit or carpooling, subsidizing transit passes. You're going to hear from the project applicant of the Tahoe City Lodge today about his efforts to do just this. And then mitigation measure 10-1-E would require the county to coordinate a comprehensive wayfinding signage program, and that's the program that I had discussed a little bit earlier in my presentation. And the idea is that we would do this within one year. Again, the intent is just to make it easier for visitors to get around town without their private vehicles, where they can park once, find transit and bike paths. And that was really in response to comments we received very early on from our area plan team members too about just the need for wayfinding signage in our town centers. Okay, finally, we've got three more additional policy, or excuse me, more mitigation measures that have been added. The first is 10-1-F, which recognizes that the area plan will not resolve all traffic issues itself. So it really commits TRPA and the county to working together to improve mobility over the long term, based on data from our partners. So that's what that one does. 10-1-G requires a review of all of the sort of mobility strategies every four years. So we would look at traffic volumes. If the volumes that are projected in the area plan exceed what has been anticipated, it requires additional mobility improvement strategies to be identified and really kind of retool the area plan with respect to the transportation chapter. And then 10-1-H is related to implementing TRPA's congestion management process. I spoke to that earlier. So with that, we did bring the area plan and the Tahoe City Lodge forward to the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council on November 10th. They did vote in support, 7-0, to recommend approval of the area plan, and voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the Tahoe City Lodge. I will point out that they, the council noted that they were very happy and impressed with the incorporation of changes. They felt like we really did work to respond to the comments that we received on the draft. They also noted strong support for the Tahoe City Lodge project, just noting that they felt it was one of the best redevelopment projects in the area. So, strong, strong support for both projects. And then we went before the Planning Commission on November 17th. And for the area plan, they voted 5-1 to recommend approval. There was one commissioner that was opposed to the secondary residential unit programs' provision to require a deed restriction. So we heard some concern about that and a desire to really take that back to market rate units. And then there was the second commissioner, Commissioner Severson, who actually, who noted support for the provision for the deed restriction for affordability, but liked the idea that we would have a provision that would require us to look and evaluate that program every four years and make adjustments where we needed. So again, the final vote for the area plan was 5-1. And then for the Tahoe City Lodge, there were a number of discussion issues that were discussed by the commission, the variance they looked at, you know, those landscape strips between every 10 stalls really being a conflict for snow removal, and so they were supportive of the variance request. They talked about affordable workforce housing, asking the applicant some questions about how he would comply with that condition that's included in the staff report package. And then some clarifications on the project setting, really noting that the Tahoe City Lodge project kind of sits where it is within Tahoe City. It sits at a low point, and so when the project is constructed visually, while it's four stories, it wouldn't really have the effect of, you know, being a four-story project because it kind of sits a little low in the town center. So with that, moving on to my recommendations. So for the area plan, we are requesting your board adopt a resolution to certify the final environmental impact report and errata contained in your staff report, along with the December 6 errata prepared and provided to your board today. We also are requesting that you adopt a resolution to approve the Tahoe Basin Area Plan and errata supported by the findings in that resolution. That's Attachment C, Exhibits A through C in your staff report package. Adopt an ordinance to approve the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, implementing regulations and errata, and amend Placer County Code Chapter 17, Articles 17.02, 17.56, and appendices B, C, D, and F. And then also adopt an ordinance to rezone the properties within the Tahoe Basin Area Plan. This is Attachment E of your staff report. And again, this would all be supported by the findings contained within, in the staff report package. And then moving on to the recommendation for the Tahoe City Lodge, I'll finish up with this and then turn it over. I know Samir Tuma with the Tahoe City Lodge would like to, he has some slides that he'd like to present to your board today. So the recommendation for the Tahoe City Lodge is, staff recommends that your board adopt a resolution to certify, again, the final environmental impact report and errata, errata included in your staff report package, and then also the errata, the December 6 errata prepared and provided to your board today. Approve a vesting tentative map to create one lot to allow for a condo plan, subject to the conditions of approval, and the errata modifying Condition 44 provided to your board today, based on the findings contained in the staff report. Approval of a conditional use permit to allow for 118-unit hotel projects, subject to the conditions of approval and errata, and based on the findings. Finally, approve a variance to Section 17.54.020A2D of the zoning ordinance to remove the requirement that planner islands be located every 10 parking spaces within the parking areas. Again, that would be subject to the condition of approval and errata and based on the findings. And then lastly, approve an exception to Chapter 3, Section 3.07 of the Parking and Access Standards of the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, to allow an increase in the maximum number of compact parking stalls permissible from 20% to 38%. So the errata before you today for the Tahoe City Lodge does modify Condition 44, and so that, it really just further refines and clarifies what that condition is and does meet, we reviewed it, meets the intent of the Planning Commission recommendation made on the 17th. So here's a slide of next steps and timeline to adoption. Following today's hearing, we will be starting the deliberation process before the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. And so we'll be before the APC tomorrow, and then we're scheduled to go before the TRPA Regional Plan Implementation Committee, which is a subcommittee of the TRPA Governing Board. We are scheduled to go there on December 14th for consideration. And then finally, the last hearing would be the TRPA Governing Board Hearing, which is scheduled for January 25th. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions now, or we can move on to Samir Tuma's presentation.
Kirk.
Yeah, I have some questions on the affordable housing provision on the secondary dwelling unit. Could you help me understand how that gets quantified? How are you defining the affordability component?
The affordability components are set forth by HCD, so there's state requirements. And so that would be, if someone came in to construct a unit, they would, affordability would be reviewed by our housing specialist in-house, and again, it would be based on the requirements by HCD. And so they would be monitored and, you know, we would have to report out on those units over time.
I get that. I'm trying to translate this into seeing whether or not we're setting ourselves up for failure here. What I'm trying to figure out is, if somebody says, okay, I'm going to build a 600-square-foot one-bedroom unit that has some living area, kitchen area, and a bedroom, 600 square feet, I'm lucky to build it 200 bucks a foot, so I'm at $120,000. So now, what's my rental market? What am I hoping to recoup, having just spent $120,000 to construct this unit? How much am I allowed to rent a one-bedroom unit for in the Tahoe Basin? What is my, what's my cap?
Right. And so I don't have those specific numbers here, but I can tell you, what we did do is look at the market rate rentals right now, what we're seeing on average, based on the North Tahoe Housing assessments that was just recently conducted, and then compare those to the HCD requirements for affordability, and they're very, they're very much the same. So under today's condition, there's not a discernible difference between market rate versus the affordability requirements through HCD. And one of the reasons that it was suggested that we include this provision to take a look at that every four years is because that, those conditions could change over time. So if they do change, we could retool this program and perhaps eliminate that provision if desired.
Well, and I get that. I just don't want to spend four years flailing if we know going into it that it's not going to work. And that's why we have to have some data that says, based on average incomes and percentage of incomes, which is how we determine what affordability is, correct? It's what percentage of your income has to be spent providing the housing or acquiring the housing. What, what does that rent for? What I'm getting at is, we're obviously trying to loosen the framework because the market forces tell us that if you want to drive down the cost of something, increase the supply of something. And yet, at the same time, we know that, I mean, I throw out 200 bucks a foot, and I think that's, that's knowing there's no land basis, right? I already own the land, I own this parcel, so 200 bucks a foot is purely my construction cost. That's, might be a tough barrier. What am I looking at in terms of assuming 100% occupancy for a 10-year period? What's my ROI on making that $120,000 investment? And will I be in a position to actually go ahead and construct that base? And without knowing what X is, and X is what I can rent it for, without knowing what X is, I'm not going to go through any of the rest of that. So somebody, if we're going to say you have to reach this affordable housing threshold in order for you to be able to get the permit to move forward, somebody has to define what that is. So there's got to be a definition out there of what that is. So I'd really like to know what, what does that translate into for that one-bedroom unit? Do we have a dollar figure per month?
Right. Those, I, they change, you know, every year, we get, we get the figures from HCD, and I don't, I don't have those for you today. I can certainly get them, perhaps while we're taking public comment and then report out on that. But I would point out that one of the reasons that this provision is, was modified or included was because if, if the units are deed restricted for affordability under the TRPA code, what we can do is, it requires folks to tap into the TRPA bonus unit pools. They don't have to go out and purchase a residential unit allocation. So it was a way to kind of incentivize folks to do this, understanding that the market condition in terms of the average rents is very similar to what, again, under today's condition, what HCD is requiring. So it was really, I understand, you know, the concern. I don't have those figures before me at this point.
But the answer is, they do exist.
Okay, well, I, I'm just trying to figure out why we would move forward with adopting something without just knowing raw numbers-wise, is this even doable? Because if, if right now, you're telling me that if I have a one-bedroom unit, in order for it to qualify, to get the bonus unit from TRPA, by virtue of the deed restriction, I have to rent out at $1,000 a month or less, I can tell you that, that doesn't pencil. And so that's the only X that I need, is what, what is that threshold under which I have to get my rent in order to know whether or not I'm going to have a project at all? And that'll tell us whether or not we're going to have anybody applying for this, or whether we're going to set ourselves up for four years of nothing happening until we come back and revisit this. So it seems to me that these numbers got to exist somewhere in terms of what we deem affordable to be in the basin.
Yes. Again, I can, I can get that for you.
Okay.
I have one question. Generally, you've talked about these four-year report out after studying on affordable housing and some other issues. Is it the intent, or is the policy, is it planned that you bring those reports back to the board?
If the area plan was being modified, it would have to come back before your board for consideration and to the TRPA board as well. And it could just be, like, for the transportation piece, it would just be the transportation chapter that was being retooled or refined. And then same thing with the secondary residential. It doesn't necessarily mean that we'd be doing a full update of the area plan in four years, but just these, these specific pieces of the area plan would, yes, and it would come before your board.
Yes, well, just as one board member, I think that would be really useful for all of us in terms of policy, particularly as it relates to adapting, adaptive management and thinking in terms of our longer-term visions and strategies. That feedback, I think, would be good for everyone. Just a personal request.
Yeah, and I would, I would just agree with that and say that I think it's important to just bring us back the reports on how the policy is working. Obviously, if it's not working, that's when it comes back to our board for some sort of amendment to that policy. And that would be a very specific action that this board, whoever is sitting in these five seats, would be expected to take at that point in time. But just sort of a general, how's the policy working? I think that would be really important for us to have, considering the amount of time that staff and the community and all of us have put into creating the proposed area plan, so.
Right. I will point out that the, under the secondary unit program, there is a requirement in the TRPA code that also requires us to submit a annual report to TRPA, and that's something that we can report out to your board on as well, related to that provision.
Kirk? Oh, oh. Okay, good. Well, I think we're good at this point.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over. This is Samir Tuma with the Tahoe City Lodge Project, and he has some slides he'd like to walk through for you.
Thank you.
Morning, Chair Wigant, Supervisors. We are, my name's Samir Tuma, and I'm here on behalf of the Tahoe City Lodge and extremely excited, after a multi-year process, to be in front of you guys, seeking approval for the project. What you've heard so far this morning is really sort of the planning aspects of what goes into creating an environment that allows projects to come to life. And what I'd like to talk a little bit about is actually bringing one of those projects to life and realizing the goals. But I want to start with, about 10 years ago, I entered into my first contract to purchase a piece of commercial property in the Tahoe Basin to develop a hotel. And after very extensive due diligence, I learned just how difficult, nigh impossible at that time, it was to develop a hotel in the Tahoe Basin of any scale. In the intervening 10 years, what we have seen is a population continuing to decline in Tahoe City, and we've seen an economy, local economy, that struggled despite the fact that larger California economy has gone up and down during that time. Four years ago next week, the TRPA, I think with great vision, came up with a plan that sort of very slightly opened the door for projects to be developed. They had to be the right kind of projects, in the right locations, environmentally responsible, and, and really meeting the goals from the regional plan update. So a year following that update, we heard that the Hendrickson property became available for purchase. We got into contract, and from that sequence of events, I think a real opportunity was born. So we spent the last three years working very closely with the community, stakeholders of every description, and delved into old documents, hearings, things like that, to develop our vision, but it's a vision that we wanted it to be really reflective of the community's vision. Through that process, what we heard over and over is that they wanted a high-quality hotel. That was super important. That the, eliminate the blight that was on that site, and I don't think there's anybody who's terribly attached to those buildings, so we're all going to be happy to see those go. Improve the environment, obviously a very, very important piece of any project that's going to go in there. And ultimately, the county, I think, dubbed our project as a catalyst project. So one of the ultimate goals here was not only for our project to move forward, if possible, but also to catalyze future growth. So based on all of that, we developed a vision. And the, what, what we've come up with, the project concept, I'm not going to go too much into this, this was previously discussed by, by Crystal, but essentially... much into this. This was previously discussed by, by Crystal, but essentially 118 units, a mix of hotel rooms and one- and two-bedroom suites, food and beverage on the ground floor, and conference facilities up at the new clubhouse. When you look at the conceptual rendering of what we've done here, Crystal touched on it a little bit, but I wanted to go back to some of the goals. When we heard from the community that there was a lot of concern about, they didn't want anything that's too big, that's out of place. So regardless of what the, the rules were for stories, people were concerned that this not be a, a big imposing building. And so we very, very carefully defined the, the architecture and the style in such a way that we break up the massing along the front. It's a little bit difficult to see in the picture, but along the sidewalk, there is a rooftop deck there, overhang that is a green roof. So as you're walking even next to the building, it actually feels like a one-story building, because all you see is what you're next to. So there's a lot of thought and time and effort put into the design in order to be responsive to what the community had held, held dear to their hearts. And it was very heartening to go in front of a whole panel of, of design professionals when we met to the design review team, and for them to really comment on those aspects and, and to be pleased by what the outcome was there. Those who, I think, have gotten to know me over the course of the, the last three and a half years that we've been working on this project, come to realize that being environmentally sound is not just a soundbite with me, it's something that's important to me. And you can say that, but I think we, we have proven kind of what we're at, what we're about and how we're going about the project. Obviously, there's some, some fairly straightforward environmental gains here, removing the blight. The, if, if the project didn't go forward, the analysis shows us there'd be a lot more vehicle miles traveled. So by moving the project forward, we reduce that. We are going to be restoring 1.7 acres of SEZ, which hopefully have a very positive impact. And to, to show a measure of, of commitment in that particular realm, we didn't have to, but we went out and hired a company to look at the potential sites, do some test plots, perform some restoration on those to see how they would work. And, and the, the results are quite good. And so we're quite enthused about that. But we didn't want to just do a check-the-box SEZ restoration. We want to do a restoration that actually works. That's important to us. And we're also, by designing the way that we did design the project, we also will be removing some onsite coverage. The jobs that were created, that will be created are substantial. The economics that are a part of the, the project, we, early on, we had a, a study done that showed what the economics would be in terms of economic impact in the community as well as, on an ongoing basis, as well as during the construction project. I think you've all heard the numbers before. They're fairly substantial, and we think it's going to be a, a big impact. We, again, hopefully, because once our project gets up there and people see that it's bringing more people to town, additional projects will come along and/or existing projects will get upgraded. Lots of benefits to the community above and beyond what we're, what we're talking about here, but really realizing the vision that, that the community members came up with. Rebuilding the golf course clubhouse, which is something that we're doing on our nickel in order to create a much better golfing facility, eliminating blight and really just revitalizing downtown. The other nice thing about this particular location, we have transit right out front. Bus, buses go right in, in each direction, easy access to bike paths. And so we should see some real improvements there. So what happens if nothing happens? We think there's a real cost to nothing happening here. Vehicle miles traveled will, will go up much higher. We, there's going to be no onsite coverage reduction. The SEZ doesn't get restored, and we don't get new, nice new energy-efficient buildings. We've got the buildings that are there. And, and the other, the other item that's not listed up, there's no new clubhouse for the golf course and no new conference space in downtown. Definitely not, not what we'd like to see, for sure. This, this really does implement the regional plan, as, as, as I think you've heard Crystal say, the, the regional plans being uplinked through the area plan, and then our project really walks through many of the same actions and implements those. We spent a lot of time addressing concerns from the neighbors. And you, you've heard, I think, a fair amount about that already. But one of the things that we found interesting, this, I think there's a significant difference between a hotel development and a lot of other types of developments, and what, what type of a hotel, what type of neighbor a hotel developer needs to be. And that is because we have guests staying in our units that will, if there's noise, if there's traffic, if there's two, there's not enough parking, our guests will suffer. So what we found really was that our concerns were very much in line with the concerns of the, of the neighbors. We, I think to, to show our commitment to the environmentally, the importance of the opportunity here to do some environmentally interesting things, we have offered, not required, not as a mitigation measure, but just simply because we think it's the right thing to do, to add some, some fairly significant components to our program. We will be leading, building to a lead building level. We will operate the hotel as we do our other operations as green hotels. We're providing bus passes to our employees. So when you heard about the parking analysis that was done, that parking analysis did not assume any bus passes. This is, this will help us manage the parking better. The other thing that we're, we're going to be doing is providing bike facilities and showers for our employees. Again, not, not required, not included in the calculations, but we know that people love to bike when the weather, when the weather allows, but they don't like to get to work and be all sweaty and have to deal with that all day. So we'll have shower facilities onsite and ready to go. And we'll also be implementing a bike program for our guests, because we think that's, with our location, there'll be a lot of opportunity for people to get around town quite easily. So with that, I, you know, we believe that this is absolutely the right project at the right time and in the right location. We're happy to, the rest of our team is here. We're happy to answer any questions as we may go along, and we would like the opportunity to come back up there, public comment for any issues that we need to address.
Right. Thanks, Samir. Any questions, comments, board members? I see none. Thank you. So, Crystal, is there anything else, or?
No, that, I'm still working on an answer related to the affordability rates.
Well, Kirk's very patient, to the point.
I'm sorry. I actually thought about it on my way up today, and I, yeah, I apologize for not having those numbers ready for you.
Okay. But we're ready to kick off the public hearing.
Correct, yes.
Actually, before you do, just one comment on the errata that you have with respect to the Tahoe Basin area plan. We received some late comments. One of them was from the California Clean Energy Committee. The other was from Friends of the West Shore. This particular errata and revision to the mitigation measure is in response to the comments in the CCUC letter. This did not change that mitigation measure. It simply clarifies it, allowed us to add in the fact that CARP just released their target scoping plan on December 2nd. We've referred to that. Other than that, in looking at the CCUC letter and in consultation with our environmental consultant, the county determined that many of the suggestions were either infeasible in terms, as that is described under CEQA, or have already been addressed in the responses to comment. The same was our conclusion with the Friends letter, that those particular items in that letter have already been addressed in the responses to comment.
Thanks, Karen. So, I'll, uh, thank you for a very comprehensive and excellent presentation, Crystal.
Thank you. And actually, I have those numbers now.
I was wondering what that was, so.
So for the HCD rental limits for income category, for low, which would be 80% of area median income, it would be for a studio, would be around 1,006, 1,066, in terms of, of the, the rental limit. For a one-bedroom, it would be 1,219. For a two-bedroom, 1,300, so 1,371, actually. And then the average rates that were identified in our housings, our recent housing study that we did up here in Tahoe, for a studio is 852. For a one-bedroom is 1,225, and for a two-bedroom is 1,472.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. And then the, the issue of the deed restriction, is that in perpetuity? Is it for a 10-year period? It includes transfer title? What are, what are the?
Yeah, it's a 55-year rental limit, so it would be for 55 years, the restriction.
Okay. All right. Good. I'm, I'm encouraged by these numbers. That, that, that helps. That gives me a little bit of confidence that it might, the program might actually be embraced. I can see where you can start to, assuming that you can contain your building costs, I can start to see where you can actually generate a little bit of return on investment by making those improvements.
Okay. And I also want to point out, you know, I had noted that you have to get a residential allocation. It was also brought to my attention, too, that you, you would also need to purchase a development right. And so the average cost of, of those two things together, the allocation and the development right, is about $20,000.
Yeah, I didn't realize that you were going to be adding that. Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Good teamwork. Thanks. So, to see if I listen well, we're going to open up the public hearing on both of these items, the Tahoe Basin Plan Update and the Tahoe City Project. So people can come forward and comment on both of those, but then, when we deliberate, we're going to be addressing these issues one at a time. Also, had, had the, I have had the request this morning for organizations to be able to have five minutes, because apparently the three didn't quite work during the planning commission hearings, so I'm going to provide for that. But I still would appreciate people to not be redundant and try to make their points that haven't been made already, but the board has always is, is anxious to hear those comments at the same time. So with that, I will open up the public hearing, and please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Ray Garland. I've been a homeowner in the Highland subdivision of Tahoe City for 32 years, and I am in my sixth year as President of the Highland Homeowners Association, representing 170 Tahoe City homeowners. On Labor Day weekend, we had our HOA annual meeting, during which time the Tahoe City Lodge was discussed in some detail. And I'm pleased to report that our Board of Directors and all of those present thought that the Lodge was a great and very necessary idea. No one voiced any objections. I think Samir Tuma and Kila Development have been exemplary in their community outreach and in listening to the concerns of their neighbors. As has been stated, the Hendrickson buildings are indeed a blight and an embarrassment to anyone who wants to have pride in their city. And collectively, our association wants to go on record as saying that we think this development will enhance the image of Tahoe City, and will also have a catalytic effect of causing other property owners to fix up and upgrade their properties. So we strongly endorse this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Carol Hester, and I'm a 30-year resident of Tahoe City and a 20-plus-year small business owner right here in Tahoe City. First off, affordable housing, it is a crisis level. We are all losing employees. They're moving to Reno. They commute to Truckee. They're not going to commute to Tahoe City. Anything we can do is necessary. It may not be the perfect plan, but it's a step in the right direction. So I urge you to support any efforts to get our workforce housing, not in the long term, but also in the short term, where it will help all of us. But I'm really here in support of the Tahoe City Lodge Project. This is an appropriate infill project that will remove our current downtown blight, complement the existing businesses and recreational offerings we currently have in Tahoe City. Quality lodging is sorely lacking in our community. The Lodge will enhance the community's economic stability and vitality with an increase in TOT, sales tax, and visitor spending. There's a small group of us that have been talking about this issue for many, many years. But of course, with this opportunity, we've had a chance to talk a little bit more. And we kind of, business owners, community members, came together and said, what can we do to help this? Because we know at these meetings, all us business owners, we have to work. We can't be here. We can't sit for two hours and come and make our public comment be heard. So, a grassroots effort, Tahoe Future, we've signed it, we started a petition, both online and in person. And so we went around, and it's just been going for a short while here, and I have over 200 signatures on this petition that couldn't be here today, but they wanted you to know that they are in support. And I'll just read it to you briefly. It says, "To Placer County Board of Supervisors, Planning Commission, and TRPA Governing Board, we are pleased to present you with this petition affirming this statement. We, the supporters of Tahoe City's future for long-term economic, environmental, and community well-being, strongly encourage Placer County Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, and Tahoe Planning Regional Agency, APCRPIC, members to vote yes for approval of the Tahoe City Lodge final EIS, EIR, and project application, so the Tahoe, Tahoe City Lodge project can move forward with an approval as soon as possible. And attached is a list of individuals, over 200 signatures in this community that all support the Tahoe City Lodge." I'd like to submit that. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Good, good morning to the Board of Supervisors. My name is Robert White in Tahoe City, and I'm on the board of Tahoe Marina Lakefront. I just want to take a couple minutes to comment on the process we went through with the Lodge. And it's particularly important, perhaps because we are a key stakeholder in this, in the Lodge, because we're directly across the street. Samir proactively reached out to us, directly contacted us, to discuss any issues we might have on the Lodge. We had a number of informal meetings with Samir during the course of the various hearings and so on. But we also had a formal meeting between Samir and the owners at Tahoe Marina Lakefront. And we talked about any issues that the owners might have had in terms of particularly noise, parking, signage, and so forth. I describe those meetings as very candid, very cooperative, very productive. I think we had a good joint understanding of what the issues are and might be, a good understanding of what the resolutions were now and what they might be in the future. And we had a good, a very good understanding that this process was not static, and that understanding the intent going forward was equally important. So our takeaway from all this is, first of all, we think the Lodge will be a good neighbor, and we're looking forward to having the Lodge in Tahoe City. We think they are, and they, and they will continue to be committed to working on the issues collaboratively. And based on this process, where the words stakeholders and collaboration are sometimes thrown around like jargon, we think there's some important lessons that can be learned going forward on how to get practical outcomes on things that will benefit the, the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Ellie Waller, member of the North Tahoe West Citizen Team. This isn't about the need for a new lodging project or correcting blight. My comments were not addressed in key issues, and the consultant responses left it to discussion. Over a half million has been spent by Placer County on the environmental analysis, while impacts and extras to the public. Accountability of all the taxpayer monies that have been allocated and spent to date on the Tahoe City Lodge have not been disclosed. I know it's not illegal, but it is a gift to public funds. Whether the taxpayers want it or not, it's happening. Parking spaces, what is the true value? A Placer Economic Development Report stated parking spaces could cost 30 to 70K each, so 100 spaces is a gift of 3 to 7 million dollars. Plus, no reduction in parking, but a variance requested, and even the urgency by the League to save Lake Tahoe to reduce was ignored. How was the density calculated? This is a condo hotel project, not a timeshare project. TRPA Code clearly states 15 units per acre with kitchen ratios. Although town centers can be assured 40 units per acre, that is for existing TAUs. Let's talk about the proposed CFA to TAU pilot program. New TAUs are being created. This needs to be disclosed. And note that no analysis was completed in the RPU or the area plan that I could find and has not been disclosed where. The pilot program is not well-defined, and TAUs- The pilot program is not well-defined, and TAUs are new. This could be violating the RPU. I suggest you restrict the Tahoe City Lodge project to 15 units per acre as defined in code, as the project will be done, to ensure environmental impacts are manageable and mitigatable as a pilot program. Level of service F already exists and will be exacerbated by any of the TBAP and lodge alternatives, so let's go slowly on a pilot program. Approximately 26,000 square feet of CFA exists, based on illegal, unpermitted second floor of current structures. Yes, TRPA verified, but CFA conversion would be 58 TAUs if the pilot program is approved. So now you have two pilot programs. The Lodge was originally stated as a pilot program, we took the name out because there's so much confusion. Placer plans to provide the remaining 60 units through another extraordinary gift to public funds. It is not clear what the developer is paying for in the way of TAUs. How much is the county investment? The developer is not paying outright for the units. TOT, heads-on-beds, will pay back the county. Analysis of the Tahoe City Golf Course, New Clubhouse, and Greens location not completed or disclosed where in the EIR. Doubling the size alone will have new impacts, as well as possible scenic and other issues with a second-story and conferencing center. That said, why are you, Placer County, giving the golf course the extraordinary gift of a new clubhouse through a developer in Greens reallocation? As they have not been required and no enforcement, I'm asking for just another moment as a member that spent four years on a Citizen Team. The golf course was purchased over four years ago. Placer County, this is a dereliction of enforcement, and you are one of those owners. That brings the perception of conflict with the MOU, partners of the Tahoe City Golf Course and the Lodge. You are one of those also. Why is the deed restriction for the golf course not part of the Tahoe Basin Area Plan language to ensure clarity for future potential ownership? Affordable housing obligation is very unclear, as the project site occupants today lease the space, and the Lodge applicant is not responsible for their employment status. The full-time equivalent employees stated in the CUP, and the mitigation should be at least 10 FTEEs, not the difference between what's on the ground existing today. That said, why aren't we asking for a two-to-one SEZ restoration because of all these other extraordinary gifts, free gifts? I'm asking that you do not approve the suggested alternative for the Lodge project today, revisit the issues, and approve next year, when all the issues have been adequately and accurately analyzed, or, alternative two, the reduced density, which is the right thing to do. I look forward to the bag of goodies being explored for the Kings Beach Town Center project in pre-negotiations. Thank you for the extra time and opportunity to speak today. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Jeff O'Xandebor from Sunnyside Resort, managing partner there. Been there for 30 years, lived in Tahoe City for 38 years. I applaud this project. I've watched my numbers during the wintertime fade, 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 to a total of 20% less than we were when I started at Sunnyside Resort in 1987 during the wintertime. And those are head counts, those are hard counts that come into the dining room and to the bar. We need quality lodging. We've lost our market share to North Star, Truckee, and Squaw Valley, and our economies eroded for the last 10, 15 years. I'm excited about this project. We need a tourist base. I guess we could do nothing and just watch Tahoe City continue to erode, but I would like to see this happen immediately, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Board. I'm Gary Davis, 30-year resident of Tahoe City, also a business and property owner in Tahoe City, and I also highly support this project. I've been on the Tahoe City Downtown Association Board as President, I've been part of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association for many years, I'm going to be a Board Member tomorrow. I've been on the Visioning Team for Tahoe City, as well as our Area Plan Team for Placer County and Design Review for Placer County and Tahoe City. We need this catalyst project, it is vital to our community. If this doesn't happen, nobody would ever invest in Tahoe City. Samir has done a wonderful job of reaching out, the League will speak to their support and other groups in TRPA, and he's done a wonderful job of bringing people together. On another note, you've mentioned with the area plan, I was on that team, and I support the area plan, although it doesn't go as far as I would prefer it to go, but that's the way these broker deals happen. But affordable housing, the second dwelling unit is critical. We've got to get the public-private partnerships working on affordable workforce housing, not just affordable low-end housing, but workforce housing. So I think the area plan's a step in that direction, and certainly your support of the second dwelling unit would be a fine step as well, but we have a lot of stuff coming down the pike on that. So thank you very much for your consideration today. I hope you wholeheartedly support this project, which is a great start for Tahoe City, and we need quality lodging. And thank you, Samir, for being the brave man to step up to do this in Tahoe.
Thank you.
Good morning, Shannon Eckmeyer, League to Save Lake Tahoe. I would like to request the five minutes for our organization. I'll try to be succinct as possible, but I know as of late, I've been critical in reviews and projects in front of your Board, so we are in support of this area plan, the Lodge and associated environmental review, so I think it's important for all of you to hear the highlights and specifically why. This area plan is the type of plan we were hoping to see when we supported the regional plan in 2012, so we're really thankful for where it has gotten to today and hope that you pass it as proposed today. I know you've heard a lot about the Tahoe City Town Center modification. We know deed restrictions are not taken lightly. This came from two years of meetings with the Tahoe City Oversight Committee, where Placer County sits, along with the Tahoe Truckee Airport, North Tahoe Resort Association, and the Tahoe City PUD. Along with the deed restriction language came SEZ restoration, which we're really excited to see. And I would like to specifically thank Cindy Gustafson, we worked really hard on that throughout the process. The area plan has also identified other SEZ possibility restoration areas, and incorporated policy on the TARP Plan update that this Board approved in April to improve public transit, TMDL target language, and also protecting scenic views using transition heights. The environmental review itself, we are in support of as it is proposed today. I thank your staff in Ascend Environmental for really taking our comments seriously. They reached out to us and not only responded to our concerns, but came through with some out-of-the-box mitigation measures, specifically as they relate to traffic. As you heard today, working with TRPA on congestion management strategies and the four-year vehicle traffic count, this is important for us, not only that we can use it for other models, for other local jurisdictions and area plans, but as tools when we're lobbying for public transit funding dollars in Sacramento, so we're really excited to see that. The Lodge, I know a lot of people here are going to support it today, but specifically want to thank Samir and his team. I think they started talking to us almost three years ago and really wanted to create a project, and we do think this is a flagship project that we are hoping to see with the regional plan update, and again, can be used as a model for future projects within the Lake Tahoe Basin. Not only does it have the SEZ restoration, but above and beyond measures that Samir did explain to you, including passes for employees, for buses, changing stations, and a bicycle program. We haven't supported a redevelopment project publicly in over 10 years, so this is a big deal for our organization, and we want to thank him for taking the time to create a project that we could actually do that. So I really did want to just end by thanking all of the stakeholders that have been involved over the past five years, the Tahoe City PUD, and Cindy, TRPA staff, Ascend Environmental, Gordon Shaw, your traffic expert, community members, but most importantly, Placer County and your staff. We've met over hundreds and thousands of hours with staff, along with Commissioner Levinson, Supervisor Montgomery, your General Counsel, executive staff, and I think we might not always agree, but this area plan is a great example of how we can come together and find solutions so that we can all be on board and supporting the regional plan. And I really wanted to end by recognizing the work done by Crystal Jacobson. I think her and I have been in communication, if not weekly, almost monthly, for almost five years. She's worked effortlessly on this, not just with us, but to get all the community and other stakeholders on board, and you're lucky to have such dedicated staff, and I hope to work with her again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Wygant, members of the Board. My name is Pat Davison, I'm the Executive Director of the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. We're a regional nonprofit trade association composed of 365-member companies, representing the broad cross-section of the building industry-related trades and professions. The industry in our region employs hundreds, if not thousands, of workers, many of those who live or work in the Tahoe Basin. We have been involved in the affordable and workforce housing issue for many years, in part because of the regulatory nature of the issue, but also because many of our members are employers looking for housing for their employees. Our comments today on the area plan are focused only on second units. We think increasing the supply of second units is one of the easier ways to solve our affordable and workforce housing crisis. You don't need millions of dollars to build a second unit or go through the land use entitlement process. It makes sense to us to try and focus on that one avenue as an easier, more feasible solution. The Tahoe Basin Area Plan Environmental Analysis only assumed 1.25 second units per year over the 20-year lifespan of the plan, or 25 second units total. That is a disappointing commentary on what we collectively think we can achieve. The plan's goals for affordable workforce housing are very modest. It will take a long time to see improvement. It was in that context that we framed our comments on the area plan. Our first point was that all residential parcels should be eligible for a second unit, and I'm glad to say, thank you, Placer County, for agreeing and making that change. Our second point covered the concern about using a market rate allocation for a second unit, and again, strong thanks to Placer County for making that change and taking market rate allocations out of the second unit program. Custom residential construction using market rate allocations occurs here as a result of our tourism and recreation economy. That construction activity pays the bills for hundreds, if not thousands, of families, and has far-ranging positive ripple effects. We did not want to see market rate allocations reduced any further than they already had been through the regional plan process. Our third point, and one that's key for today's discussion, was our desired emphasis on using a locals-only type of deed restriction and not an income-based deed restriction, because the income or rent cap could be a disincentive. We think using a locals-only deed restriction takes the smaller-sized unit out of the vacation market and will help establish a more normal, and I use that in quotation marks, rental picture for locals. That may be all you need to do. The income-based deed restriction for affordable housing, that's for households that are very low or low-income, has a 55-year lifespan. The income-based deed restriction for moderate-income housing, which uses TRPA bonus units, is in perpetuity, and that's referenced in Land Use Element Housing Sub Element of the TRPA Regional Plan Policy HS 2.3, where it talks about those bonus units are in, the deed restrictions are held in perpetuity. The county can't force a homeowner to build a second unit. You can help them, give them ideas, give them fee assistance, maybe some prototype plan set, but at the end of the day, the homeowner has to decide whether it's worth the time and money. If the goal is to remove regulatory barriers and create incentives, then the income-based deed restriction may be counterproductive policy. You can't live in a policy. Your policy should be the catalyst for action. Your policy should be the reason, or part of the reason, why second units actually get built. Reliance on income caps in perpetuity may seem to be a helpful requirement, but if that requirement repels or frightens off potential suppliers, then there is no improvement. In response to our concerns, language has recently been added to the area plan, requiring a review of the second unit program after four years or 2021. I have requested that your NITRAC and your Planning Commission receive the county and TRPA annual housing reports, so some monitoring of the progress on second units, or lack thereof, can be done at least once a year by those entities at a public meeting. We do not want to wait until 2021 to see if anything has happened. I want to close with high praise for Crystal. I echo what Shannon said, terrific response and professionalism by Crystal and all of your staff. Thank you very much, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions at this time? I don't see any right now. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors and county staff. My name is Carol White. I live in Tahoe City at Tahoe Marina Lakefront. First, I want to say that I also support Tahoe City Lodge project, but I'm here to address, just briefly, another issue. I spoke to this Board in July of my concerns about a line that was drawn in the draft area plan for a specific alignment from Commons Beach to Fanny Bridge, along the lakefront directly in front of and on TML's property, Tahoe Marina Lakefront's property, without any analysis of alternatives to the path or the impacts of it. But as Crystal has explained, changes have been made in the area plan and the map, removing this specific alignment and replacing it with a dotted line that connects Commons Beach to Fanny Bridge, and explains in the legend that this dotted line means that any future alignment will look at all feasible options at the time that a future path is proposed. We now believe that we're on a level playing field and are very grateful for these modifications. You should have a letter from TML in your packet acknowledging these changes and thanking the county, particularly Crystal, and the many other agencies such as the County Planning Services Division, the Department of Public Works, the CEO's Office, and the other county staff members, and the Tahoe City PUD, and of course, Adam Lewandowski from Ascend Environmental. All of these individuals and agencies appear to understand our concerns and agree to these modifications. As a stakeholder in any future path, we respectfully request that we be included in future discussions for this segment of the path. And finally, our remaining concern is that the county remain involved as a decision-maker in determining any future alignment that would require an easement across TML's property. In summing up, part of my lingering concern is that the Tahoe City Mobility Plan, which did not go out for public review, is an implementation measure in the area plan. And the mobility plan itself, which is the implementation measure, calls for proceeding with the preferred alternative along the lakefront in front of TML's property. But the county and Crystal, in particular, have assured us that any project for this segment of the trail will undergo stakeholder input and public review, and we're confident that a trail can be constructed that will enhance Tahoe City, help our local commuters, attract visitors, and while perhaps requiring reasonable compromise on our part, will not severely impact the use of our property. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Wygant, members of the Board. My name is Stacy Lyons, and I'm the Executive Director of the Tahoe City Downtown Association, resident and homeowner in Tahoe City. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Tahoe City Downtown Association Board of Directors. The TCDA Board of Directors enthusiastically supports the Tahoe Basin Area Plan and Tahoe City Lodge project, as they will bring numerous improvements to Tahoe City and the greater North Lake Tahoe community. TCDA, to give you some background, TCDA works tirelessly executing popular Tahoe City events, continuing townwide beautification and community design, advocating and promoting Tahoe City, and continuing our vision to make Tahoe City America's best mountain town to live, work, play, and visit. However, fulfilling this vision has not always been easy. Over the years, we've watched our amazing Tahoe City lakeside community decline due to various factors, including the growth of our neighbors in Squaw, North Star, the town of Truckee. Due to our region's outdated area plan, sustainable growth, redevelopment, and an adequate bed base has sorely been missing from the town center of Tahoe City. After a long, five-year planning process, we want to thank Placer County staff, Tahoe Regional Agency Planning Staff, and all the partners for the creation of the proposed Tahoe Basin Area Plan and Tahoe City Lodge project that's proposed today. TCDA, our Board, and our members have been involved in nearly every step of this five-year plan, planning process, and we appreciate the tremendous efforts... planning process, and we appreciate the tremendous efforts of listening to our feedback, making modifications when necessary, and always keeping the community involved. We really have come a long way, and I'd like to thank everyone for their part of this process. To that end, the TCDA Board of Directors unanimously voted in November to endorse the Tahoe City Lodge Project and overall community plan, which we believe will benefit the economic vitality of Tahoe City. This is TCDA's first formal project endorsement in the history of our organization and a positive step towards increased advocacy of our Tahoe City community. The Tahoe City Lodge Project, we believe, will revitalize the Gateway Area into Tahoe City and provide additional lodging options to visitors, which in turn will translate to more visitor dollars being spent in Tahoe City as our visitors shop, dine, recreate, and enjoy our amazing community. Please join the Tahoe City Downtown Association Board of Directors in both our support of the plan and the Tahoe City Lodge Project, creating sustainable redevelopment, job growth, and positive environmental restoration to Tahoe City and our North Lake Tahoe community. The time is ripe for Tahoe City. Let's not move backwards, let's move forward in realizing the vision to make Tahoe City truly America's best mountain town. Thank you very much.
It is afternoon. No, it's morning. Steve Glazer, longtime resident of Tahoe, and I am in support of the plan, especially affordable housing and the Tahoe City Lodge, with one exception to adopting this plan. I represent a property owner at the corner of North Lake Boulevard and the east entrance to Lake Forest. And I and my clients thank you for this opportunity to speak today. Placer County Board and the Board of Supervisors and the TRPA were sent a document on August 5th. Then again, you were emailed a document on the 1st of December, and I think today Park brought that same document to your clerk of the board. If there's any questions on that letter, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that letter, but hopefully you have a lot of time to review it since August 5th. My client's never received any kind of written acknowledgement of that letter, so maybe we're still one of the 111 that's going to get a written response. My client, we are requesting a correction to a longstanding Placer County and TRPA mistake that was made back in the 80s at the last Tahoe City plan, which downzoned and only allowed this property to be multifamily residential. The property has been only used as commercial. The history of it, it was a car lot, and the history of it strictly commercial. There's another property that we are -- I'm not thinking outside the box. There's another property similar in locations on the west side of the North Lake Tahoe and Lake Forest entrance. It's UC Davis Lab presently. It's used as a lab, but it's also a family. There's a house on it. It's known as a fish hatchery. This property is zoned commercial and family, and it's zoned mixed-use. And that was never downzoned in the 1980s, and it's been left out of this current parcel, current plan update. Anyway, we respect that. We request that you reinstate the property as commercial and multifamily. There is a glimmer of hope. This property is on the bike path of Tahoe City, and Tahoe City Public Utilities District is going to be removing snow from that bike path this winter. My last request would be that you -- or two requests, that when you look at the Truckee River properties, that's multi -- that is zoned commercial, that you also look at. Crystal said that she was going to look at the Truckee River corridor where there's commercial, non-conforming commercial use. Hopefully, my client's parcel will be re-looked at at that time. My last request is that when this property comes before you as a project, you will look favorably to it and approve it as a multifamily and a commercial, possibly, for instance, a commercial that would use some kind of recreational transportation without affecting the carbon footprint.
Good morning. My name is Greg Lean. I'm going on 37 years of practicing law in Tahoe City, and I've watched a lot of changes over the years, and as the previous speaker said, the developers essentially got chased out of the entire Tahoe Basin back when I arrived. CTRPA was active, TRPA had just gone into total lockdown after adoption of the amended compact. And I think we're at the end of a long cyclic period of time where finally we're coming back around, and Samir has been helpful in getting us there, the staff's been helpful, TRPA even has changed their stripes, I think, over the years too, and gotten a lot more user-friendly. So we're coming into a period that we need to get right, and I really appreciated your comments, Mr. Euler, about getting it right. Let's get it right this time so the incentives we put in place really do what they're intended to do. And this is something we need to be careful about because some of the so-called incentives that were built into TRPA's regional plan way back when went absolutely nowhere because they were impractical. Nobody used the bonus units. Nobody used a lot of the widgets that you had, and we want to change that. So as we go into these final two big hearings, your hearing followed on by the TRPA Governing Board in January, this really isn't the beginning of the end. It's the end of the beginning, to paraphrase Winston Churchill, of this entire new era, and we need to get these things right. I want to say that I represent the Rudnick family. The Rudnick family owns what's being described as the Bechtel property that Crystal described to you. They're immediately adjacent to both the PUD property there with the golf course, immediately adjacent to Tahoe City Lodge, and they also own the Gateway Area, if you will, from the bridge down below the PUD all the way to the Raft and Gas Building. You could argue it's a little blighted. I hope I'm not insulting my client in saying that. But that line seemed to work pretty well for you when hyping the Hendrickson Building as a blight, so I thought I'd follow along. This guy's leading the way. So anyway, we see tremendous potential and are inspired by what's going on right now, and we are actively working with your staff and other partners to see if we can come up with a project that has the right kind of symbiotic relationship with what's going on adjacently and can come up with some kind of mixed-use visitor-serving commercial housing, TOT generating revenue, and so on. But let's get it right. Let's look forward to furthering our common goals, working with our partners, and moving this forward. I want to express appreciation to county staff for working with us, making some changes based upon our comments, to Samir in working with us. We had a little dispute over the easement, but I think we'll work all that out. Appreciate you moving the parking out of that easement area. I'm wrapping up now. I'd like to have my client come up. He'd like to make a couple of comments as well. Aaron Rudnick. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here, coming to another one of these. I'm sure the finish line is in sight. Hang in there, team. I'm Aaron Rudnick, Sierra Northwest Properties, Tahoe Sierra Recreation. I imagine we're all familiar now. I do have a couple of things that I want to touch on that Greg had segwayed into, as well as a few things that have been said in the past. I did promise Jennifer I would just quickly burn through this list, I'm afraid. We'll add a little bit more on. Perhaps the Christmas lighting is making me sentimental. Couple of things with that, with the parking and things from the easement, it's gone back and forth so much that I feel like it's got convoluted. One of the things I hope I could clarify, at least what my initial intention was, was the issues where we wanted to make sure that all of that you saw currently today has about a dozen parking places on it. That's all on our property. We did not want those calculated into applicable parking spots for the hotel. We wanted that to stay a separate thing, as we did not agree that that's part of that. I did not want to lose my parking places. When you have a dozen parking places, parking is one of the biggest issues we have, not to mention the monetary value of them. When I am forced to lose those or remove them and do something else against my will, that feels like a taking, and that's, you know, certainly a detriment to me, future business, the raising of my property values. With that going in to the potentials of future development, everything, we are absolutely team players and more than willing to help revitalize this town. We are the entrance into Tahoe City. We have property on the west shore. We have property in the Special Alpine District, as well as the town center in there. I think, you know, we're going to have to get along and work together no matter what, and we absolutely want to do that. With that, I just want to make sure we keep those things in mind. It was refreshing to see one letter in the comments that came in, and about the only one I saw making that sentiment, and that was not to forget the people that have gotten us here. There are a lot of people that, you know, have the means now through decades of hard work and things to do these projects and take care of these things in Tahoe, and that has taken a tremendous amount of effort. I don't take days off. I don't give vacations. You know, we work. We keep our heads down. That's a big part of why we didn't know any of this was even starting when it happened. All we do is work. We're, you know, we don't really have a lot of time to do these meetings, and it's been a lot of catch-up trying to make up the time from coming back and forth. So with that, I just want to make sure we keep a better working partnership. With that, I would like to see the conditional use permit, be it's on document, that's easy to see, read through, go through. I would like to hopefully set up a meeting with Samir, Representative from Placer County, and any other interested ones that we can perhaps work more right from the start of really hammering through the conditional use permit. I think that will save a lot of bickering back and forth, save a lot of things. I think it'll get a positive, open, transparent sense of cooperation right off the bat and just nip a lot of the other stuff in the bud. With that, I'll get through as much of my list quickly as I can now. I've asked for a substantial -- do you mind if I take 15 more seconds?
Sure.
List of notifications and documents we'd like to have, as well as any other interested adjacent properties. Any design review committee meetings related to the lodge, these are notifications. 48 hours prior to any foundation construction, 48-hour notice before any demolition, if asbestos removal is necessary, notification in advance absolutely for health and safety, as well as proof that if there is no asbestos that needs to be removed, that we know that. Now, documents, improvement plans, any revisions, islands, landscaping, especially anything in the easement, conceptual landscape plans, soil stockpiling, staging, final geotechnical reports, final drainage, emergency evacuation plan. We'd like to be included on that and make one more comprehensive one since we are sharing a driveway. It'll be easier on everyone in keeping order. BMPs, minutes of any designer review committees where parking is discussed, project-specific SWPPP, grading extensions by the TRPA, location of equipment, accessory washing, steam cleaning areas, construction signage, demolition plan and permit, Caltrans encroachment, any paving schedules, sewer easement abandonment, relocation, proof of off-site easement equations, copy of proof of traffic mitigation fee payment, and any plans designed for the proposed entrance, monument of structures, and any signage for that. And there's more, but Christmas is coming, and I'm sure you're all busy.
Well, and then if I could, yeah. Does staff have your preferred contact information?
I would hope so. If not, I have plenty of cards and I'm...
Yeah, so we have a culture of making sure when anything is going across the agenda and you want to be on a mailing list, a contact list, we're definitely committed to that.
I'm trying to take the "you can't bother me enough" stance.
Good. That's our commitment. And then I think Jack has a question.
Yes. Can you briefly explain the whole parking issue? I wasn't aware that there was a quasi-taking, and can you just kind of summarize that?
It all started with disagreements. As you know, currently, there is a driveway already in place on that property closer between the two buildings where the corner of the Thai food restaurant is. Upon finding out that that driveway was going to be closed off, our driveway was going to become the primary entrance to that, it started a question back and forth of what's going to happen in these parking spots. We don't want to lose those. We absolutely need it. Our building's full now. Our business, our tenant businesses are growing to the point that they have more employees than they had two years ago. We need all that we can get. It started going back and forth with that, whether they're completely removed, whether they're going to stay, would they be in the way now that it's an entrance and not that? The easements for right-of-way and road for ingress and egress to the rear of the property. And so there was a lot early on in the back and forth of what that meant and how that would affect what's already there. We essentially were just trying to business as usual, stay with what we're already doing.
And the result, how do you feel about that?
Like I said before, you know, I'm not happy with losing any parking, but I don't think that we've ever really come to a full resolution over the easements and things. So we're trying to do the best we can to just make sure everybody's aware that, not being redundant, but yes, we do still have concerns moving forward.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. That's our ending.
All right. Good morning. Jennifer Quasnik for Friends of the Westshore. And I wanted to also extend thanks to staff from both Placer County and TRPA, as well as the consultants, for addressing a lot of the comments that we've made and other people made in the final document, questions we've actually asked frequently in the last couple of years. Finally, we had some answers provided at least, and we also appreciate all the time that's been spent on this. That said, I want to focus on one of the larger, bigger-picture issues here that were in the comments that we submitted last week again. But I think all of us agree, we don't want to go through this level of planning effort again for a while. I mean, we've heard this has been going on for, what, five years? A lot of time and money and, you know, public, a lot of time coming to these meetings. So a lot's been going on here, and yet, this is maybe one of the last opportunities for a long time to deal with real traffic solutions. We know we have a VMT problem. We know we have local traffic has gone up. We included in our comments information that shows that VMT has gone up on the north shore and west shore, whereas it's gone down in south shore. So when you look at things and you average those all together, hey, we don't have a VMT problem, but anyone who's been here the last two years knows that we do have a traffic problem in north shore and along the west shore. And while there are some things that have been included in the EIS that will help and some checkpoints in the few years, there were several ideas that were, again, dismissed. And so we see a lot of mitigation opportunities that are being passed by, that are being put off until the project level, when clearly these are area-wide solutions. In fact, TRPA had an extensive discussion at the Regional Plan Implementation Committee last July, and they talked about how there are, these solutions are needed at this larger area-wide level, not at the individual project level. But what we're doing now in the plan is we're putting off a lot, saying, well, mitigate it at the project level, and then when the project comes around, well, actually, the individual property owner can't do that, so really, we can't mitigate those fully. I mean, the Tahoe City Lodge is actually an example where there are some things that the lodge can't do as an individual project, but we see that the Placer County Area Plan is the opportunity to be considering these things. And so the question we posed a lot is, if not now, then when? We didn't do it in 2012 with TRPA's regional plan, and now we are looking at the north shore and west shore specifically. And again, we're losing the opportunity to deal with these impacts, and we've only seen increases in traffic. It's going to get worse. You have approved the Amartis Valley and the Squaw Valley projects, which are going to increase VMT. We already have a problem, so when are we going to be dealing with these issues? So I really just, not saying don't build and don't redevelop, we need it to a point, but we also need to figure these things out first, and that has not been done yet. On a quick note, I just wanted to say, we did submit our comments the morning after the staff report came out last week, so if more time is needed, then please put out the staff report sooner. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Chairman Weigant, members of the board. My name is Roger Kahn. I lived in Tahoe City for 56 years. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Tahoe City Lodge. When my family moved to Tahoe in 1960, the property that the Tahoe City Lodge is proposed to be built on was blighted. It's been blighted for 56 years, and obviously longer. This is an opportunity to really revitalize the whole community of Tahoe, Tahoe City. There have been no new lodging facilities built in Tahoe City for over 50 years. The most of the commercial development, most of the buildings there haven't been fixed or worked on for many, many years. If we can do this project, we can encourage many, many other property owners in the Tahoe City area to fix... to fix their properties and we can have a real, um, blooming, wonderful community again. So I urge you to support this project and, um, give Samir an opportunity to build a first-class, um, lodging facility in Tahoe City. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Next speaker? Any more speakers?
Good morning. My name is Laurel Ames. I'm from the Tahoe Area Sierra Club. I'm, um, excuse me. I'm interested in addressing this from a big picture and also throwing cold water because I know everybody's very happy with this project. But this is a, this is a Tahoe, um, the TRPA's area plan, and you have, um, spent a lot of time working on it. But what you didn't spend time working on was some of the real big problems. So we're gonna have LOS four, five, I'm sorry, LOS F between Grove and, and the intersection of the Y. LOS F is just, don't bother, turn off your key and walk. Your car is gonna be stuck for a long time. It's serious. I, that's going to have major impacts on your traffic, on your tourist traffic and your residential traffic. And those LOS four, five, I'm sorry, F extend. The more you add, the longer they last. Uh, this is not a simple problem. And one of the suggestions, and, and there's a lot of words. There are a lot of words. There's going to be this mitigation and that mitigation and the other mitigation, but they're all dependent on some other activity before they get implemented. And on county service area zone of benefit, that's one of the mitigation measures. Well, how hard is that? That requires a vote? That requires money? I, is that gonna happen in your lifetime? But it's a mitigation measure, but it's not a mitigation measure. It's just words. Uh, and that's really, I mean, GHG is going to be violated by this plan? Oh, well, it's okay because GHG is gonna be violated anyway. Wait a minute. Why doesn't this plan, this area plan, address a major significant GHG issue? And if not now, when? I mean, this raises huge questions. This is an area plan that was, uh, put together with the best, uh, instincts, but nobody was thinking in the big picture. Placer County has probably a third of the lake in its, uh, area. And we're getting a plan that has violations of standards. We're getting a pile, uh, plan that has, you know, I'm really glad about the SEZ restoration. That's good. We need to encourage all the SEZ restoration we can get. But one-to-one won't give you an effectively functioning SEZ. It'll just give you some SEZ restoration, which everybody can feel good about, but it's not enough. So I, one of the, one of the statements made in, in defense of this is that the TRPA plan has limited growth. Well, I got news for you. It's not limited. It's limited by the word, "we have growth limits", but doesn't mean anything 'cause there aren't growth limits. So I, I want to leave you with that. I hope you do well with your Tahoe City project. I don't see much good coming out of it in terms of the big picture. We need real planning where we think way ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Ryan Wexler, Kings Beach resident. If I could just change, uh, the topic for a moment. I, uh, I see that the Tahoe City aspect of this is a big focus, um, but the area plan affects a lot more than Tahoe City. I wanted to just address specifically the, uh, building heights, um, increase in Kings Beach. I strongly oppose the, uh, the building height increases. I do not think that this fits the character of the small community. Uh, the charm of Kings Beach is that while it's, uh, dense, it also has a certain quaintness to it. A very important point that needs to be considered is that Kings Beach is already densely populated and developed. Look no further than the volume of twenty-five-foot lots throughout the, uh, community. It's also one of the most densely populated areas in all of, uh, North Lake Tahoe. If you look at census data, it's twice the density of Truckee, twice the density of Tahoe City. Uh, increasing building heights to this level will add the potential for a massive increase in density that's not sustainable with our infrastructure. A major reason why Kings Beach is attractive and people come and come back is its character. The four-story heights will ruin, uh, the character of this town and will result in the definition of overdevelopment. Uh, I, I, I know it's been addressed to a degree, but I haven't seen an adequate traffic study and parking study in Kings Beach um, since the, uh, core construction project. We are, you know, since the core construction project, the traffic in this town is, is not sustainable. Um, the project looks very nice and it functions on a Tuesday in the midst of off-season, but is a traffic disaster for the entire summer and during any busy periods in the winter. Uh, so I, I'm very concerned about that and I, I don't think that's been adequately addressed. Um, King, Kings Beach now already has stigma with locals as a place to avoid unless you like sitting in traffic. Uh, repeat visitors drive through the neighborhood, and this has become a, uh, a dangerous situation for the, uh, many pedestrian, uh, residents. The point of note here is we're maxed out in terms of capacity. We're maxed out in terms of traffic and parking. And, uh, it, it's just not desirable to make, uh, Kings Beach um, a quick stop to go to a business, to purchase something in a store. So I believe it's, um, causing a negative impact on the economic environment. Uh, overdevelopment's not a new concept. It can reduce property values and, uh, taxes long-term. It can also reduce business activity and viability. I believe, uh, the increase in building heights would set, set up Kings Beach to be a classic case of overdevelopment. This will result in negative economic environment and ruin the character of the town for everyone. Uh, so I, I hope you consider this. We're not, you know, Kings Beach, Tahoe Vista, Tahoe City, all these little places that this area plan affects are all, uh, different. Thank you.
Hi, Anne Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. Again, this has been a lot of stuff coming down the pike, huh? But, um, I just wanted to say that the affordable housing thing, I'd really like to hear that Placer County is gonna enforce the affordable housing that these different projects were supposed to do, like Marta's Camp was supposed to do ninety units. Hasn't happened. There's about five hundred units between Truckee and Placer County that should have been built that haven't been built for one excuse or another, like the recession or whatever. So what about that? Because I think it's a taking of our rights to make everything multifamily now, which is what you're doing with the secondary housing, but I've complained about this forever and nobody cares. So I guess what we'll have to do is try to get some CCNRs for our area to try to, you know, not keep our already dense area made even more difficult. Then the other thing, um, that I really, you know, we, I spent three out, three years on the team for Kings Beach and we're being totally ignored about not going to the fifty-six feet in height. And certainly the Tahoe City Inn has, or Lodge has just captured this whole process. It's not at all about our area plan. It's all about that. And so we've just, it's, it's so sad. It just is tragic. And, you know, this is public money and support that's gonna go to this project and went to BBLLC. What was it, ten million, you guys? Something like that? I hope that this one works out better. But, you know, converting T A U's to, uh, converting commercial floor area to T A U's, four hundred of them, that's additive growth. A kindergartner would know that these projects are not gonna reduce traffic. I don't care how you couch it, it's not gonna happen. So, you know, we've really need to deal with, as everybody's been saying, that isn't quite on board with this wonderful plan, is we need to look at big picture. We need to fix this now. There's lots of things that could be done that aren't being done. But according to the cut staff's plan, it's all great. It's gonna be reduced. I just don't believe it for a second. And, you know, finally, there are people that have invested in Tahoe City that haven't asked for public money and have done it on their own, like the Base Camp Hotel. They paid a reasonable amount for the property. I think it was a million and a half. They could afford to build. They could afford to do it. They didn't have to say, "it won't pencil out", so it's not impossible. I built, built a commercial building. I wish I had known you could get all this help. But I didn't know at the time in Placer County. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Lee Conant, and I spend about, uh, with my family about half of our time up here in Lake Tahoe and the other half down in San Diego. Uh, but we do have a, a pretty substantial, um, stake in the community here. My three kids are, uh, seven, five, and three, and they participate in, in a bunch of the activities like Mighty Mites and Shooting Stars at Squaw Valley and, um, they do karate over Tahoe Mountain Fitness. My, my daughter does ballet right down the street in Lake Forest, so we're in the community, we're invested, and I drive them, my wife drives them all over the place, uh, and the, the infrastructure in this area is absolutely dilapidated. The, the roads, but also the infrastructure in the sense of, I think, this affordable housing issue. That, I consider that sort of an infrastructure issue. These, these are issues that need to be addressed, but can be addressed by a community that that stands up and says, "we're willing to invest in this community. We're willing to put in a new hotel. We're willing to redevelop under the, the new regional plan." I, I think it, it takes a lot of gumption to stand up and do that in an area where for fifty years redevelopment and staunch environmentalism has kept redevelopment from happening, which is a great thing, that it's kept a lot of difficult projects from happening. But to just stand aside and not do anything about the problems that exist currently, uh, I think is exactly what you'd be doing if you voted down, uh, the Tahoe City Lodge and the regional plan. There, there need to be changes, and I see these projects as a catalyst to change in a positive way. Uh, I don't think that just standing by and voting these down and allowing another initiative to come through at some point, and who knows when it would come through, to then vote on it then. I, I do hope for the community that you do allow these to move forward and that you put your support behind, uh, growing the Tahoe City area into, uh, a world-class, um, resort town, that it should be. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Please come forward and state your name.
Good morning, Chairman Wigan, members of the board. Welcome back to North Lake Tahoe. My name's Alex Morolatos, and, uh, I am speaking to you today as a resident of North Lake Tahoe, as a businessman, as a lodging owner, and as a community volunteer. First, I sat on the Tahoe Vista Community Plan Team and I, I have a different perspective. I think that was open, honest, and transparent, and it took a whole lot of input from the community, and I applaud the effort. And I think, and I urge you to approve the area plan as a result of that collaborative effort. But specifically today, let me speak to the Tahoe Vista, I'm sorry, the Tahoe City Lodge, because we're all one North Lake Tahoe community. I sat for nine years on the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association Board, two years as its chair. In two thousand and twelve, we approved the use of T O T funds for the acquisition of the golf course. The intention and the discussion of the board in deliberating the, that investment, which we did at length, was the anticipated investment in tourist tra, um, um, investments in that golf course area for the betterment of the Tahoe City community, but also the lakefront community of North Lake Tahoe. I believe that this project falls in mind with our goals in purchasing that golf course. A desire to see lodging the region desperately needing, is, is in desperately need of for, for the purpose of sustained economic success, for creating a walkable destination for visitors, generating business for local shops and restaurants, and creating more T O T to invest in our community. It's a simple equation. Get people there who otherwise come for day trips, create congestion, and allow them to walk in the community that we have already invested in. It'll be, bring real investment to the community, supporting businesses year-round, setting a higher standard for redevelopment and making the environmental and aesthetic improvements we all want for Tahoe City and Lake Tahoe itself. This plan reflects the support of so many people who have spent their time not only in the development of the plan, but in reviewing it. It will reduce the dependency on the automobile, I am convinced, and better preserve the environment as a result. I hope you will approve, vote to approve the Tahoe City Lodge, the area plan, as it is in support of the community's goals, its economy, and the environment we live in. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors, Cindy Gustafson, General Manager, Tahoe City P U D. I wanted to, uh, first start out saying that the P U D has been involved in this process since the very beginning, and I do believe we started back in two thousand and seven with some elements, working on the regional plan with TRPA and the impacts that it could have to a future area plan. Um, but I really want to commend, uh, the leadership of your staff, including David and Crystal, Jennifer, Steve, many of the staff who, you've devoted outstanding resources to this process since, uh, we started in two thousand and twelve on the area plan. And I just really appreciate their leadership. There's been a huge public outreach component of this, and I hope you're hearing that today, that there's been a lot of public involvement and other agencies involved through this process. We came together in two thousand and twelve as partners to buy that Tahoe City Golf Course, that forty-six acres that was key to the future of Tahoe City, and we said it was key because it wasn't just gonna remain a golf course. The partners wanted to see this be an impetus to both environmental restoration as well as economic redevelopment. That's how we could raise the money to purchase this key piece of property. And so those assets needed to be deployed to make a difference in our community. We have had, in addition to all of your public outreach, the P U D, the Oversight Committee, there have been countless meetings. I was trying to add them up in the back of the room, and I'm gonna say it's at least over forty public meetings over the last five years of owning that golf course, talking about this concept. So this is nothing new to the community, that we were looking at transferring density and height, that we were trying to make that available to projects, not one project, but to multiple projects, just one that can take advantage of this opportunity to try and reinvent downtown Tahoe City in those very small landlocked parcels that border the golf course. Um, the members of my Board of Directors did adopt the deed restriction for the remaining properties. Uh, so that is, uh, in perpetuity, and that's not an easy decision for a Board of Directors to make on a key piece of property, but with the support of the partners and meeting those goals, they did that with a lot of public input as well. And also, uh, most recently, we brought to the Golf Course Oversight Committee and to the other partners findings of consistency, that in fact the Tahoe City Lodge project is meeting and, uh, findings consistent with all of the goals of the partners. Um, so again, with thanks to all the partners, the county staff that I've mentioned, but also Shannon Eckmeyer with the League and Lucia Maloney with TRPA, I want to thank everybody's leadership on this. This has been a long time coming. I think we see a real solid path to both environmental restoration as well as economic redevelopment. redevelopment. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Any other speakers? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name, for the record, is Ron Trebus, and...
That's not the name you used last time.
How many terms have you been on the board? I'm starting my eighth today, and I think maybe I'm ahead of you, but I'm not sure, with the Tahoe City Public Utility District. But today I'm speaking from one of the other partners in the golf course purchase, and that is the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, who recommended to you guys to put TOT money into the purchase of this. And to follow up on what Cindy had said, that all of the partners at this time, and other than Placer County, who is waiting for today to happen before they review whether or not this particular project is in accordance and doesn't curtail any of the reasons or the goals that the partners had when this land was purchased. And I was just going to run through those real quick. And from the utility district's point of view, it's to maintain this recreation and open space for the community. And again, this was a long-range vision along the line of what Laurel was talking about, that this will in perpetuity now have this open space within Tahoe City like it has been since Tahoe City was first settled. And the recreation open space has been improved already and will continue to be improved. In fact, we're opening the first north shore ice skating rink this Saturday on that land. Guys, come on out. It's free skating from 2:00 to 6:00, if you'd like to entertain us. Anyway, and other things are water quality improvements, which it achieves, this project or maintains, air quality improvements, the improved parking and traffic circulation, which has been substantiated and worked on very good through Peter's Tahoe City Mobility Planning, the provide a site for visitor amenity, capital improvements, that's being achieved and not being curtailed. The Truckee Tahoe Airport District that came in as a partner in order to do an emergency helipad still has that in place, and they're planning on that going in. In fact, there was a practice landing this week, I believe. But that going in this summer, and that will not be curtailed at all by what is being proposed, as well as the emergency landing areas, excuse me, of the openness of the golf course. And all parties will achieve the purpose of maintaining a single ownership, providing public input into all the planning that goes into that open space, and consolidate any land holdings with other public properties will occur in any of the discussions. Please take the appropriate actions. Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Joe Alanza. I've lived here for over 40 years. I've seen some of you before in the past. I show up every now and then, I'm not a regular. I'm not a critique of EIRs, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a scientist. I've lived here for 40 years, I raised and am raising my nine children here. I participated in the business community, the education community, and this is my home, and I'd like it to be for my children. I think this project's great. I support it. I live less than a half a mile away from it. I'm excited about it. It's like a rebirth for Tahoe City. I have not seen anything but degradation in Tahoe City for a long time. It's nice to see that we might have something positive coming, replacing something that we won't need to talk about, because you can go look at that for yourself, and you've seen it for years like I have. I've seen it as long as I've lived here. It's like, when did it get here? I don't even know. But I think something new like this is welcome, it's exciting, and it gives us promise for the future. So I support it 100%. I know there are some people that don't, and there always are, but that's okay. I think for the first time, I've seen more people come together, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to address support on this issue? Seeing none, Shamir, if you have any further clarifying comments that you need to add to the record? Now's the time to do it.
Supervisor, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I'm going to give Shamir a little advice that I received as a first-year attorney. I used to work for a gentleman who's been practicing for 50 years. I think he's lost five cases in his whole career. He's still practicing. And even when he lost those cases, he still saved his clients' money. And he told me this, he said, "If you think you're winning, keep your comments short. Move forward at your own peril."
I appreciate that advice. If you were to watch the recording from the Planning Commission, when I got back up afterwards, having been a practicing attorney myself for, well, since the 80s, I didn't take the advice of my lawyer or my lawyers who trained me, but rather I took the advice of my mother, who also said to me, "Quit when you're ahead." Thank you.
I see lights on, and I may have questions of you, but Kirk and Jennifer, did you have questions of Shamir?
Yeah, I, well, no, not of Shamir of Staff.
Of Staff, okay. So with that, we're going to close, so let me close the public hearing then on both the Placer County Tahoe Basin Area Plan as well as the Tahoe City Lodge Project. And we will bring it, bring these items back to the Board. First, the Placer County Tahoe Basin Plan, for any questions, comments, and deliberations in decision-making. And with that, Kirk, I'll give the microphone back to you.
Yeah, I, thank you. I want to revisit, now that I've had a chance, to take a look at some of the numbers based on what Staff said in terms of rental prices and all the rest. And really, you know, while I support what we're doing today, and I support any step toward providing more housing options in the basin, I'd really like for us to consider looking at some modifications as we move forward. I don't want us to wait four years, because that's about three and a half more years than we can afford to wait to really start addressing this problem of affordable housing options, or housing options, period. Long-term rental availability, as opposed to what the market seems to be driving, that's more of this short-term weekend renting stuff. And so just looking at the numbers, based on hitting those affordable housing numbers, and again, given, all sorts of assumptions get worked in here, of course. And assuming a 600-square-foot unit that you're able to deliver at $200 a foot, that didn't take into consideration the cost of acquiring, the allocation and all that stuff, assuming a 90% occupancy of that unit, which means that 47 out of the 52 weeks of the year it's occupied, you do have some turnover, and assuming a 4.5% interest rate, you're looking at about an 11.5-year return on investment for somebody to go ahead and make the decision to build something. And that 11.5 years does not include replacing carpets after a certain number of years, or any of the other maintenance that has to go into this. And so what I'm concerned about is that we're not getting creative enough with this, and that we're too limiting when we place the affordable housing requirement on there in a deed restriction fashion without really providing a carrot. It's almost like it is the barrier for entry. You have to agree to the affordable housing thing. How about if we look at it a different way? How about if we look at it from the standpoint of just build what you can build, as long as we restrict these for longer-term rentals? You can only rent on, knowing that season's up here around four, maybe five months, your minimum rental term is a four- or five-month rental term for anything that is a secondary unit. Somebody wants to come up and work for a winter, you've got a four- or five-month rental minimum, just for the summer. Or some people who want to work in an architectural firm do want year-round rentals. Great. You've met that minimum threshold of a four... So I think looking more at it from the standpoint of getting away from the temporary rental and toward the more workforce-oriented rental, which in this market is a seasonal product, so that you're placing the restriction for building one of these on the availability for a duration of time as opposed to the income. Now, when you want to address the income side, what do we charge right now on an in-loof fee basis for affordable housing? What do we tell developers, okay, if, rather than building units, you want to pay an in-loof fee, what does that normally work out to? What are we ballparking?
Currently, the fee that we brought in recently, we don't have an approved in-loof fee.
Right, right, no, I know, we're working on that.
But the current fee that we have negotiated on a project-by-project basis has been $40,000 per FTE.
And I think that's wonderful. I think if you take that $40,000 and you turn that right around into the cost of acquiring that unit from TRPA, to add it to that affordable housing inventory, and use that $40,000 to drive down the cost for somebody to actually build one of these units, and these are the folks who then you do have the affordable housing requirement that you put on, kind of in perpetuity of the 55 years, is deed restricted. These are the ones, if you say, "We're going to make $40,000 available to you, if you want to build a secondary dwelling unit, and you want to hit this affordability threshold doing it, we're going to make this $40,000 available to you," and then all of a sudden, that $40,000 becomes a unit in the ground and not something that we have to aggregate. We heard the domus figure of $400,000 a unit. Now, we're putting a unit in that somebody, we're partnering with the private sector, and we're telling them, "Hey, you guys go ahead and do this." And now I'm looking at it from the standpoint of a private sector investor, and I'm going back to my time in the solar market and how we got around the finance components of all these things. And when we reached a point in the market where it made sense for an investor to go to a property owner and say, "We just need your property. We'll pay the cost to build the solar array, and we'll take care of the maintenance, and we'll take care of all the rest. We just basically need your property." If we have an incentive in here that is meaningful for folks to start building affordable units and putting affordable units on people's property, I can envision a scenario where you're actually going to have a business that pops up, going around to individual homeowners, saying, "If you'll make your property available, we'll pay the cost to build this thing, we'll pay the cost to maintain it for a period of time, and after 20 years, it's yours." And we've made our delta back in the last eight years of operation of getting these things up and going. So let's figure out how we take these limited dollars, these $40,000 a unit or whatever they are, and translate that into something that's meaningful for the private sector to grab onto and really provide that kind of an incentive, at the same time recognizing that there are people who can pay a market rate, who would love to live in the Tahoe area and not have to drive to Reno, because not everybody's, you know, in the workforce housing that we think of, working in our restaurants. We can create that middle class here in the area by having an affordable market-rate housing. But by placing that 50-year deed restriction, or 55-year deed restriction, I just really believe we're creating a disincentive for somebody to move forward with providing a housing inventory that can meet that, you know, that middle income, the teacher or whatever, that middle-income market here in the basin. So I'm glad we're taking a look and moving forward with something. I think, though, we ought to start the day after tomorrow, or the day after your TRPA meeting, and let's look at how we can further refine this. Let's get with the contractor folks and figure out how can we further refine this and create real market incentives to meet this housing need that we have here in the basin.
Jennifer?
So as I often do, I'm actually going to agree with Supervisor Euler on this. I think his suggestion has a lot of merit. I don't think it prevents us from moving forward today with, hopefully, what we will move forward with. Crystal, I did want one sort of clarifying question answered, if you could. The issue that Mr. Glazer raised on behalf of his client, can you just clarify why, again, clarify again, why those particular properties and others, not just this one, are not included in what's in front of us today? And then follow up with, how can we move forward, again, sort of keying off Kirk's idea for looking toward the future? How do we move forward with that in the future?
Yes, sure. There are a number of parcels in the basin, including the parcel that Mr. Glazer was referring to, right in the Lake Forest area, as well as a lot of parcels, actually on the west shore, there are a number of them, that are non-conforming uses. So we see a lot of commercial uses and residential where they're not actually allowed under today's code. We tried to address those in 2014 by proposing land use and zoning changes on those sites. And that was met with concern that we were kind of, the scale of the area plan was a little bit too big. The TRPA governing board members had noted that we needed to really kind of scale it back, if you will, retool it, and concentrate those land use and zoning changes within just the town centers as a way to implement the regional plan. And so we did just that. So the plan that was released in 2014 actually included, that the parcel that was talked out today, it was included in that mixed-use district, and we pulled it out in response to the comments that we had heard from the TRPA at that time. So in 2015, now that parcels is, we're bringing, carrying forward the existing regulatory provisions. What we have committed to publicly and will work towards is a separate work program following adoption of the area plan, where we really kind of look at the non-conforming uses here in the Tahoe Basin and try to address them through refined zoning or land use changes. But really, just, it would be kind of a more, you know, a standalone work effort where we're really honing in and focusing in on those sites.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate that when we did have this broader scope of vision, I did personally get feedback from some of the TRPA governing board members that they thought we were overreaching, and that we really did need to scale it back, and that, you know, once an area plan that they could support was in place, there were ample opportunities for future discussions about some of these existing non-conforming uses. So I really just wanted that clarified, because I think it's really important to recognize that we have had multiple discussions about this. Mr. Glazer and a few other friends and I actually sat in the clubhouse at the Tahoe City Golf Course and had some conversations about, you know, what can we do moving forward? It is on our radar, and I think it's really important to recognize that we're not saying no to anyone, we're just trying to finish an almost five-year process, because even before the December 12, 2012, adoption by the TRPA Governing Board, you and I and other folks at SEDRA were having conversations about area plans and how we needed to get those updated. But we want to make sure we can get through this process, and I think that feedback from the TRPA, that we did need to step back, we did need to reevaluate, and we do have opportunities for the future to address some of these non-conforming uses, was something that we heard very clearly at the county. We took TRPA's input and advice on that and said, "Let's figure out a way to get through this." So we hear you, we're not ignoring you, we recognize your concerns, and we're going to be able to move forward in the future on this, but not today. Thank you.
Okay, and then, EJ, you started to come to the podium, and then, Crystal, I wanted to make sure I checked in to see if you guys had anything further you needed to let us know before we took action.
I was just grabbing the remote, that's, just to make sure we...
Okay, don't. Thanks.
I don't think so, unless you had any specific concerns, I thought I could flip back to site plans of the Tahoe City Lodge, if you had any questions about parking or...
It looks like we're okay at this point. So with that, what we're being asked to consider is adoption of resolution to certify the environmental document, adoption of resolution to approve the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, and RADA adoption of the ordinance to approve the Tahoe Basin Area Plan implementing regulation and RADA, and adoption of the ordinance to do the rezones discussed. So it's a pleasure of the Board.
Well, sorry, Jerry, go ahead.
And of course...
I want to include in that the December 6th RADA that Crystal talked about earlier, and the finding, additional findings that are on page 18 of the staff report.
I'm going to flip to those recommending, the slides that have the recommendations on it. And I also wanted to point out that it was brought to my attention, I was... And I also wanted to point out that it was brought to my attention, I was reading off of some other, some slides that weren't my own slides today, and it was brought to my attention that I misspoke about the Tahoe City Lodge in terms of the environmentally superior alternative. The Tahoe City Lodge that's proposed is definitely environmentally superior, it meets, has a lot of public benefit, water quality benefit, and so I just want to reiterate that on the record.
Thanks. Okay, Jennifer?
I really just wanted to take this opportunity to thank county staff, particularly Crystal, but Steve, and Alan, and Paul, and I think some others who aren't here today, who helped with the plan team process and were available, not just during the individual meetings, but pretty much twenty-four-seven to folks who had questions or concerns. Crystal and her team, I think, worked really, really well with the plan teams, but also with our partners, like the Lake to Save Lake Tahoe. I think Shannon's comments about, you know, really creating a good relationship where we can have valuable discussions back and forth and say, "Oh, yeah, we recognize, that is an issue. How can we clarify that?" Really critically important and a great step forward, honestly. I'm really delighted. I want to remind people that back in the day, we did a couple of things. When we first started talking about this, one of the things that I said publicly on record is, "Not everyone is going to get everything they want." And that's how a process works. The county didn't get everything it wants. Plan team members and plan teams, maybe as entities, didn't get everything they wanted. I don't think the lake probably got everything they wanted. I doubt some of the TRPA governing board members will have gotten everything they wanted, but what we did get, and I think this is just so critically important, is something that is consistent with the TRPA's regional plan, something that is an improvement over our existing area plans, and will be better for the lake, and it will be better for the economy, and it will be better for the environment and our social fabric up here. I was sitting here thinking about the conversations about Tahoe City specifically, and I remember coming to Tahoe City in the late sixties and the early seventies with my mom and to go skiing at Squaw, and we stayed at the Pepper Tree, which even at the time, frankly, wasn't great, and I'm not sure it's improved. Luckily, I have my own home, so I don't have to stay there. But, you know, I remember how busy Tahoe City was. I mean, it was incredibly vibrant. I remember later, when I was of legal drinking age, going to the Naughty Dog and thinking about that particular building, not just Tahoe City specifically, but the Naughty Dog itself, and how loud that was, and what a mess that was. And, you know, what's being proposed is something that is going to be such an improvement for folks, to folks like the Tahoe Marina Lodge, who had to put up with a lot of really noisy, loud, horrible drunk people who were having a great time and supporting Tahoe City's economy. But I think what Samira is proposing is going to revitalize the community, going to bring those dollars back, but not with the horrible, noisy, loud drunk people. So I think there's some real opportunities here to do the right things for the environment, to do the right things for the economy, to do the right things to hopefully bring back that twenty percent of people that we lost, permanent, full-time residents between 2000 and 2010. And so it's absolutely my delight to make a motion that we, I'm going to take these separately, Jerry, that we move forward with Agenda Item 2A, 1A, B, C, and D inclusive, including the errata from today, and yes, the findings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Now, it is also my great delight and a little bit of relief as well to make the same motion on Item 2B, 1A, B, C, D, and E, with anything else that Jerry would like to throw in there.
Well, I include the findings in the staff report on page ten as to the condition of the vesting tentative map, and page ten and eleven as to the conditional use permit. It includes the errata for Condition 44 that was included, in addition to the errata from today to revise mitigation measure twelve dash one on the final environmental impact report.
And this is why we bring him. Yes, that.
Second. And Supervisor Duran has a comment.
Yeah. You know, the last couple, six years I've been up here, we've had a lot of controversial things, and it sometimes gets very difficult to, not necessarily to make decisions, but see people who haven't gotten in on the process, and they get in at the end, and they don't realize how much has happened in the history of a project over five or a number of years. Meetings like this, next to vacationing here with my family, are the closest things to bliss. For one reason, and it's not for anything that we've done, it's the fact that folks sat down and had a discussion and tried to resolve problems. You know, that's the single most important thing to getting to that sweet spot that we call, you know, something that we can live with. And unfortunately, many of us, that doesn't happen in a lot of things, and we're left up here, rather than calling balls and strikes and moving the parties together to find that spot, we end up, well, we end up calling winners and losers, and that's definitely not my thought. But I do want to thank everybody for their efforts in actually working towards a goal. And again, as Jen said, it's not something that everybody wants, or everybody got what they wanted, but my experience tells me that when people walk away from a deal and everybody's a little bit sore, it's probably a good deal, so.
And I also, I also want to include in the motion, the findings on the variants on page eleven and twelve of the staff report. And I think we need a second.
I think Kirk's second.
Oh, Kirk did? We need a chair that pays attention. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The board will now adjourn to lunch and close session, and Jerry?
The board will be adjourned to closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss two items of existing litigation and one item of anticipated litigation. In addition, the board will have a conference with its real property negotiators to discuss a acquisition or...
Red, red wine, you make me feel so fine. You keep me rocking all of the time. Red, red wine, you make me feel so grand. I feel a million dollar when you're just in my hand. Red, red wine, you make me feel so sad. Anytime I see you go it make me feel bad. Red, red wine in a eighty's style. Red, red wine in a modern beat's style, yeah. Red, red wine, you make me feel so fine. Monkey back on the sofa and I sweep the plan. The lion growl, the monkey get choked. Bun back on the pan and put a rubber bow. Red, red wine, I wanna hold on to you. Hold on to you, 'cause I know you love true. Red, red wine, I'm gonna love it till I die. Love it till I die, and that's no lie. Red, red wine, can't get you off my mind. Wherever you may be, I surely find. I surely find. Make no fuss, just... Red, red wine, you make me feel so fine. You keep me rocking all of the time.
iHeart 80s.
1981.
On the floors of Tokyo. Down in London, town's a go-go. With the record selection and the mirrors' reflection, I'm a-dancing with myself. When there's no one else in sight. In the crowded lonely night. Well, I wait so long for my love vibration, and I'm dancing with myself. Dancing with myself. Dancing with myself. When there's nothing to prove, inside there's nothing to prove, I'm dancing with myself. If I looked all over the world, and there's every type of girl. But your empty eyes seem to pass me by, leave me dancing with myself. So let's drink another drink, 'cause it'll give me time to think. If I had the chance, I'd ask the world to dance, and I'd be dancing with myself. Dancing with myself. Dancing with myself. When there's nothing to prove, inside there's nothing to prove, I'm dancing with myself. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. All over the world, and there's every type of girl. But your empty eyes seem to pass me by, leave me dancing with myself. So let's drink another drink, 'cause it'll give me time to think. If I had the chance, I'd ask the world to dance, and I'd be dancing with myself. Dancing with myself. Dancing with myself. If I had the chance, I'd ask the world to dance. If I had the chance, I'd ask the world to dance. If I had the chance, I'd ask the world to dance. Dancing with myself. Dancing with myself. Sweat, 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 sweat. Dancing with myself. Oh, oh, oh. 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 Dancing with myself.
You're listening to iHeart 80s. For another full decade of hits, check out iHeart 90s on iHeart Radio.
Girl, I've been watching you From so far across the floor now, baby. That's nothing new. I've watched you so many times before now, baby. I see that look in your eyes.
Look in your eyes.
And what it's telling me. And you know, ooh, girl, that I'm not shy. I'm glad you picked up on my telepathy now, baby.
Here in my mind.
You know you need.
Girl, I wanna shake you down.
Well, well.
I can give you all the loving you need.
I'm gonna love you.
Come on, let me take you down.
Oh, baby.
We'll go all the way to heaven.
I've been missing you. And the way you make me feel inside. What can I do? I can tell you've got your pride now, baby. Come to me, well, well. Let me ease your mind, oh, babe. I've got the remedy, yes, I do. Now give me just a little time.
Here in my mind. Girl, I wanna shake you down.
I wanna rock you down.
I can give you all the loving you need.
I'm gonna love you.
Come on, let me take you down.
Well, well.
We'll go all the way to heaven.
Girl, I've been missing you. And you know, it's funny. Every time I get to feeling this way, I wish I had you near me. I wanna reach out and touch you. I can't stop thinking of the things we do. The way you call me, baby, when I'm holding you. I shake and I shiver when I know you're near. Then you whisper in my ear, oh, babe. Well, well.
Here in my mind.
You know you need.
Girl, I wanna shake you down.
Oh, baby.
I can give you all the loving you need.
Oh.
Come on, let me take you down.
Well, well.
We'll go all the way to heaven.
Any, any, mighty more. Come on, girl, let's show the show.
I can give you all the loving you need.
Roses are red and violets are blue. I'm gonna rock this town for you.
Hey, baby. We'll go all the way to heaven. Here in my mind. Girl, I wanna shake you down.
Shake, and you shake with me.
I can give you all the loving you need.
Shake, and you shake you down.
iHeart 80s.
1989.
If you see a faded sign at the side of the road That says fifteen miles to the...
Love Shack! Love Shack, yeah, yeah. I'm heading down the Atlanta highway. Looking for the love getaway. Heading for the love getaway.
I got me a car, it's as big as a whale. And we're heading on down to the Love Shack. I got me a Chrysler, it's about twenty. So hurry up and bring your jukebox money.
The Love Shack is a little old place Where we can get together. Love Shack, baby.
The Love Shack, baby.
Love Shack, baby, Love Shack. Love Shack, baby, Love Shack.
Signs say, stay away, fools. The club rules, and the Love Shack.
We're set way back in the middle of our deal. Just found the old shack, and I gotta get back. Glitter on the matrimony. Glitter on the highway. Glitter on the front porch. Glitter on the highway. The Love Shack is a little old place Where we can get together. Love Shack, baby.
The Love Shack, baby.
Love Shack, that's where it's at. Love Shack, that's where it's at.
Poking and I kissing, dancing and I loving. Wearing and the nothing, cause it's hard as nothing. The old shack's shimmying when everybody's moving around And around, and around, and around.
Everybody's moving, everybody's grooving, baby.
Folks lining up outside just to get down.
Everybody's moving, everybody's grooving, baby.
Fuckin' little shack. Fuckin' little shack. Up in my Chrysler, it's as big as a whale. And it's about to set sail. I got me a car, it's as big as a whale. So come on and bring your jukebox money.
The Love Shack is a little old place Where we can get together. Love Shack, baby.
The Love Shack, baby.
Love Shack, baby, Love Shack. Love Shack, baby, Love Shack. Bang, bang, bang on the door, baby.
Knockin' a louder sugar.
Bang, bang, bang on the door, baby.
I can hear you.
Bang, bang.
On the door, baby.
Bang, bang.
On the door.
Bang, bang.
On the door, baby.
Bang, bang.
You're what?
Henry. Rusty.
Love Shack, baby, Love Shack. Love Shack, baby, Love Shack.
Yeah.
Love Shack, baby, Love Shack. Love Shack, baby, Love Shack.
Yeah, we're at the Love Shack.
iHeart 80s.
The Jimmy was 80s.
iHeart 80s.
See the stone set in your eyes. See the thorn twist in your side. I'll wait for you. Slide of hand and twist of face. On a bed of nails she makes me waste. And I wait without you. With or without you. With or without you. Through the storm we reached the shore. You gave it all, but I want more. And I'm waiting for you. With or without you. With or without you. I can't live. With or without you. And you give yourself away. And you give yourself away. And you give, and you give, and you give yourself away. My hands are tied. My body bruised, she got me with nothing to win And nothing left to lose. And you give yourself away. And you give yourself away. And you give, and you give, and you give yourself away. With or without you. With or without you. I can't live. With or without you. With or without you. With or without you. I can't live. With or without you. With or without you.
All 80s all the time, all the time. It blows my mind, the 80s. The 80s.
iHeart 80s.
Who can it be knocking at my door? Go away, don't come down here no more. Don't you see that it's late at night? Very tired, and I'm not feeling right. All I wish is to be alone. Stay away, don't you invade my home. Best off if you hang outside. Don't come in, I'll only run and hide. Who can it be now? 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 Who can it be knocking at my door? Make no sound, to throw across the floor. If he hears, he'll knock all day. I'll be trapped, and here I'll have to stay. I've done no harm, I keep to myself. There's nothing wrong with my state of mental health. I like it here with my childhood friend. Here they come, those feelings again. Who can it be now? 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 Is it the man come to take me away? Why do they follow me? It's not the future that I can see. It's just my fantasy. Who can it be now? 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 Who can it, who can it?
Who can it be now?
The greatest decade of music ever. iHeart 80s on iHeart Radio.
And we are living in a material world. Nothing.
You're what?
I'm Batman.
Love Shack, baby, Love Shack.
iHeart 80s on iHeart Radio.
May the good Lord be with you Down every road you roam. And may sunshine and happiness Surround you when you're far from home. And may you grow to be proud, dignified and true. And do unto others as you'd have done to you. Be courageous and be brave. And in my heart you'll always stay. Forever young, forever young. Forever young, forever young. May good fortune be with you. May your guiding light be strong. Build a stairway to heaven Where the prince or a dragon bound. And may your never love end, babe. And in my heart you will remain. Forever young, forever young. Forever young, forever young. Yeah! And when you finally fly away, I'll be hoping that I served you well. For all the wisdom of a lifetime, no one can ever tell. But whatever road you choose, I'm right behind you, win or lose. Forever young, forever young. Forever young, forever young. For, forever young. For, ever young.
Back to the 80s.
iHeart 80s.
Lost in a dream. I don't know which way to go. Let me say, if you are all that you see, then maybe I'm moving way too slow. I've been fooled before. Wouldn't like to get my love caught In the slamming door. How about some information, please? Straight up now, tell me, do you really wanna love me forever? Run my car in a hit-and-run. Straight up now, tell me, is it gonna be you and me together? Or are you just having fun? At times, I wait for some small clue. Let me tell you, I keep getting chills. When I think your love is true. I've been fooled before. Wouldn't like to get my love caught In the slamming door. How about some information, please? Straight up now, tell me, do you really wanna love me forever? Run my car in a hit-and-run. Straight up now, tell me, is it gonna be you and me together? Or are you just having fun? You are so hard to read. You play hide-and-seek With your two intentions. If you're only playing games, I just have to say. Do, do you love me? Do you love me, baby? Come on now, do, do you love me? Do you love me? Tell me, baby.
For this report.
For this report.
The board has returned from closed session where they had a conference with legal counsel to discuss two items of existing litigation and one item of anticipated litigation. In the Nova Resi versus County of Placer case, the board heard a report, no action was taken. The case of Ryan Basque et al versus County of Placer, the board heard a report and authorized the defense and indemnity for the sheriff, the undersheriff, and the deputies who were named and served in the complaint. And they also waived the conflict to allow the county council's office to represent the individual officers and employees in the county. The board also had a conference with its real property negotiators and heard a report and gave direction to its real property negotiating teams. On the item of significant exposure to litigation, the board heard a report and gave direction to counsel on that anticipated litigation. That concludes the closed session report.
Thank you, Jerry. With that, the board's supervises meeting is adjourned for...